Good morning and welcome to the City Council for the City of Oklahoma City this morning. We would like to get started with the invocation by Reverend Tom Jones and the pledge of allegiance by Councilman McAtee.
Would you bow your heads, please? Heavenly Father, we come to you this morning, Lord, asking your guidance and wisdom in this meeting. Lord, you know the vision that you have for this great city, and we pray, Lord, that you would continue with the direction, God, that you would have for us to take, and pray that your wisdom and counsel, Lord, would flow through this group of leaders that you've positioned over our city, and, Lord, that we would be able to fulfill all that that you desire for Oklahoma City, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Vice Mayor, salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, each month, we have an Employee of the Month sponsored by the Kiwanis Club Employee of the Month program, and today, we have one of our Street Department employees, Mr. Randy Ants. Is Mr. Randy here? Beg your pardon? Was it Roger Mead? Oh, I'm sorry. Roger.
We took the pictures while I did them.
I want to change.
Well, they had you on the bottom of this, and we were at the top of this morning on the pictures, so come on up. Roger, the Employee of the Month, and I believe that the, Clark will read the resolution.
Whereas Roger Mead has been a city employee for 27 years and is a communications dispatcher in the Streets Traffic and Drainage Maintenance Division of the Public Works Department. Whereas Roger Mead receives and dispatches information and instructions to field personnel using a two-way radio on the division's main channel and during emergency operations, he communicates with specialized field teams using a tactical channel. Whereas Roger Mead also records arrivals and departures from job sites and dispatches crews to priority-one calls where the potential for danger to the motoring public is imminent. Whereas Roger Mead knew he couldn't get to work from home during this winter's blizzard, so he rented a hotel room near the central maintenance facility so he could continue dispatching during emergency operations. He worked 12-hour shifts along with crews from Monday through Thursday, making sure city trucks and contractors were sent to locations needing service. Whereas Roger also maintained records of where crews were working, emergency calls, and all information about what had been done related to snow and ice removal. These records are important for the city to collect any federal reimbursements. Whereas Roger performs a valuable service for the Streets Traffic and Drainage Maintenance Division as a direct link between field crews and the operational support elements required for work to be completed in a timely and efficient manner. Whereas this council desires to recognize Roger Mead for his dedication, professionalism, and commitment to the citizens of Oklahoma City. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the City of Oklahoma City that they do hereby thank and commend Roger Mead, May 2011, South Oklahoma City, Kiwanis Club Employee of the Month.
Well, Roger, there's one other thing that we have to take into consideration, and that is to vote. Is that correct? And we need a motion to see if this is going to be official, and I'm sure that one of the council members will make a motion, and then we'll see if their heart will be there to vote and approve this. And it's been moved and passed, and so you are official now, and I want to tell you that you've heard me on many occasions, many people that work for the Street Department and Public Works are high in my regard in reference to your performance and service for the City of Oklahoma City, and congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Now, you just bear with me, I think this was a little bit out of order, but the next individual that we have is the Bike to Work proclamation, and I believe there's a group here, Randy Ants, that in his group will come forth for the proclamation on the Bike to Work Day.
Whereas for more than a century, the bicycle has been an important part of the lives of most Americans, and whereas today, millions of Americans engage in bicycling as a viable and environmentally friendly form of transportation, an excellent form of exercise, and a great recreational activity for individuals and families. Whereas educating cyclists and motorists as to proper and safe operation of bicycles is important to ensuring the safety and comfort of all users. Whereas this activity will promote a healthy lifestyle that lends itself to a healthy community. Whereas the Association of Central Oklahoma Governments, Oklahoma City Police Bike Patrol Unit, Oklahoma State Department of Health, Metro Technology Centers, OU Health Sciences Center, Greater Oklahoma City Chamber of Commerce, local bicycling clubs and groups and bicycle shops throughout Oklahoma City are promoting greater public awareness of bicycle operation and safety education in an effort to reduce accidents, injuries, and fatalities for all. Whereas the 2030 Oakheart's Plan adopted by ACOG promotes development of multimodal transportation facilities along with Oklahoma City's bicycle transportation plan will set the groundwork for future bicycle facility development. Now therefore, Mick Cornet, the mayor of the City of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim Friday, May 20th, as Bike to Work Day, and he encourages all Oklahoma City residents to always wear a helmet when riding a bicycle, to recognize the importance of bicycle safety, and to be more aware of cyclists on our city streets.
So, why do you would like to make a statement?
Certainly thank the City Council for continued support in our Bike to Work Day. This is our seventh year, and we've always had just spectacular weather. We encourage everyone to come out and be part of this and make a positive, healthy statement. We're growing our trail system here in Oklahoma City, our tapestry of trails continuing with MAPS III and with the 2007 bond. We are moving forward and sharing the road, and my gosh, we're in Oklahoma City, not New York City. We can be a very bicycle-friendly community. I think it takes common sense and courtesy. I think we need all the education that we can get on this, but we can all work together and become a healthier city and enjoy the great Oklahoma outdoors. We appreciate your help.
You have a great program that the City of Oklahoma City has been participating with, and it's the Home Investment, the Home Investment Partnership Program, and I believe we have the group here from the Home Investment Partnership Program to come up and receive the proclamation on behalf of the City of Oklahoma City.
Whereas the Cranston-Gonzalez National Affordable Housing Act of 1990 provided for the establishment of the Home Investment Partnerships Program, also known as the Home Program. Whereas the program regulations became effective in 1992, and 2011 is the 20th anniversary of the Home Program. Where HUD's Home Program is the largest federal block grant to state and local governments that is designed exclusively to produce affordable housing for low-income families. The Home Program has helped Oklahoma City provide more than 2,500 affordable ownership and rental opportunities for its residents. Whereas Oklahoma City has utilized the Home Program to leverage more than $14 million annually in private and public funding to create quality, energy-efficient housing that is affordable for working families and individuals. Whereas success of the Home Program is evidenced by the more than 600 communities nationwide that have completed 1 million units of affordable housing for lower-income working families since 1992. Now therefore, Mick Cornet, the mayor of the City of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim May 2011 as Home Investment Partnerships Month in Oklahoma City, and encourages the continued creation of affordable, quality, energy-efficient housing.
Now, and given the great things that was mentioned in the proclamation, I believe there's a couple of other statements that I think should be echoed in reference to the Home Investment Program in the City of Oklahoma City, and so I would like for you to give a couple of comments.
Well, thank you, Vice Mayor Kelly, and members of the council. Nobody can take a dollar bill and turn it into $50 like the people in the City of Oklahoma City can using HUD's home dollars. We have one of the best-run home programs in the nation, and the affordable housing that's built as a result of this Home Program is truly amazing and provides a lot of affordable housing for low-income and moderate-income folks, and it helps them realize the American dream. And we at the Oklahoma City HUD also appreciate the partnership that we have with the City of Oklahoma City, and we wish you much more continued success.
Thank you very much.
Whereas the Oklahoma City Professional Firefighters Association Local 157 is hosting the annual Fill the Boot campaign to benefit the Muscular Dystrophy Association, MDA. Whereas the firefighters have partnered with the MDA since 1954 and freely give their time to fill the boot and other MDA campaigns throughout the year. Whereas over the past 10 years, donations collected by firefighters to fill the boot have exceeded $1 million, and the state record was broken in 2009 by Oklahoma City residents generously responding to fill the boot with over $235,000. Whereas these donations support continued research into the neuromuscular diseases and help over 2,000 families in Oklahoma with critical medical services and supplies for loved ones affected by these diseases. Now therefore, Mick Cornet, the mayor of the City of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim the week of May 23rd through 27th as Firefighter Fill the Boot Week in Oklahoma City, and encourages all citizens to support this worthwhile cause.
On behalf of the Oklahoma City Fire Department, we'd like to thank the mayor, the council, and the citizens of Oklahoma City for their continued support. As they stated, you know, we've helped MDA raise a lot of money over the years for this worthy cause, and we just appreciate it. Next week, support your local firefighters. Oklahoma City firefighters will be out on the street corners filling the boot, and again, just appreciate your support. Thank you.
Just again, I'd like to echo what our deputy chief, Woodard, here had to say. We appreciate the support of the citizens of Oklahoma City, and we ask you to please give generously during that week that we collect for MDA. Thank you very much.
You know, it's interesting that we just saw a real network of what it takes to survive and build communities with people and attention to their quality of life. So you've had the health, you've had housing, and you've had helping, and you've had an employee who's dedicated service. So I think as the recipients of all of those, it shows that we are a connected city, and let's give them all another big round of applause. Thank you. Moving on to the, to the agenda, the Journal of Council proceedings, I believe there's three appointments, and I believe, I believe there's been, one of the appointments has been deferred.
One of the appointments, we'd like to strike item E at this point in time. There are some communication issues on that one, and we'd ask that that be stricken at this point.
E. E. The motion on the remaining appointments, we'll have a second. Okay. Move this. This motion's approved on the appointments of A, B, of B, C, and D?
F.
And F. Move now to Journal of Council Proceedings. Receive the Journal of Council Proceedings for April 26th and May 3rd. It's been moved in seconds, received. Okay. Approve the Journal of Council Proceedings for April 12th and the 19th. It's been moved in second. Requests for uncontested continuances.
Mr. Vice Mayor, outside of the ones, the five that are listed on your agenda, I've got a few others, starting on page 28, under item 8L1J1416, Northeast 12th Street, where it's to be strickened. There's now a new owner. Moving to page 29, under item 8N1C1712 North Brickline, where it's to be strickened. The owner has secured. Item E9009 North Francis, where it's to be strickened. The owner has secured. Item I1700 Myers Place, where it's to be strickened. The owner has secured. Item X3008 Southwest 20th Street, where it's to be strickened. The owner has secured. Moving on to page 30, under item CC2023 Northwest 25th, where it's to be strickened. The owner has secured. Item TT340 Southeast 55th Street, where it's to be strickened. That is now occupied. And finally, item YY709 Southwest 12th Street, where it's to be strickened. That building is now occupied.
Recede the council meeting. Convene as Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. It's been moved in second. Adjourn to OCMF A and convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. It's been moved in second. Reconvene as council meeting, adjourn to OCEAT Consent Docket. Any individual? Adjourn to OCEAT.
No, we need to approve it.
I thought we did vote on it. I'm sorry. Convene as Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust. Now adjourn to Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust and reconvene as the council meeting, the consent docket. Are there any individual considerations, individual considerations on the consent docket?
Your Honor, I have a very minor question on number 11. L, pardon me, V I L, I'm sorry, my glasses.
L.
L, yes, thank you.
Yes, sir.
It's just a ridiculous question, but I wanted to ask it anyway. Are you ready for me to go ahead?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Your Honor. Just the source of funds, this is a project to acquire some additional or replacement motorcycles for the police department, and I think it's a great project. The source of funds, it lists one of the several sources, and one of them is the operations, police, unmarked vehicles, and we're certainly not proposing to have unmarked motorcycles, are we?
I don't believe we are, sir.
But I'm glad to hear that. I just wanted to confirm that in case I get a question from one of my constituents who reads these things. Thank you very much, Your Honor.
Is that the only question you had on L, Councilman? All right, thank you. Any other individual considerations? Asking for, none's responded, so the motion to move consent and approve the consent docket. There's a motion? Passed. How long it was? We're now moving to the concurrence docket. It's been moved in second on the concurrence docket. Number eight, items requiring separate votes. I believe we have... Any items that? Beg your pardon? A1 is in Ward 7. I haven't received any objections to this. Have you, Bob?
No, sir. Any protests?
It's been moved in second. Passed. Number two, Ward 3.
Is the applicant present? A2.
This is ABC 736.
Yes, it's ABC 736. Nobody tell me.
Mr. White, would you like to continue this item?
I guess not. I mean, I mind.
There were, ah, Bob?
Eight A2.
Oh, eight A2.
Eight A2.
Between me having my cellphone on when it shouldn't have been in this room, this kebab away this morning, sorry. Bob, are there were no protesters at the planning meeting?
No, sir.
And nobody signed up, Francis? I move for approval.
It passes. Number three is Ward 8.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is a ABC permit for a new restaurant on Northwest Highway. There were no protests at the planning commission? Did anybody sign up to speak on this one?
Yes, sir.
I've had not, no objections from any of the neighbors out there. I would move approval.
It's been moved in seconds. Passed. Number four is also Ward 8.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is a mini storage project on 164th Street, south of the Fenwick area, and it was the subject of considerable discussion at the planning commission. There were some concerns from the citizens out there, but they primarily dealt with the appearance of the project, and is the owner representative here?
I believe Mr. Box is here.
Mr. Box.
Good morning. David Box, 522 Callard Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. At the planning commission hearing, there was considerable discussion about the appearance, and what my client has agreed to do is, this picture represents what the first building will look like. This will be the only building visible from the street. My clients agreed to do an eight-foot wall surrounding the entirety of the project that will shield it from many, any viewing from any residential. It's vacant to the east, and that frontage strip is zoned commercial, but after the discussion, we agreed to all the technical evaluations with the agreement that the wall go up, and there were no protesters, and they recommended approval.
Thank you, David. It's an interesting buffer between the electric substation and the residential area to the east as well, and so I think it's probably a good use of the land out there. Francis, anybody sign up to speak on this one? And the applicant has agreed with all the TEs that had been proposed by the planning?
Yes, sir. We've, we have submitted our amended document.
Thank you very much. I would move approval.
It's been moved in second.
Thank you.
Passed. Number five is, it's in Ward 7, and Bob, I just wanted to see if you could give me just a little bit of an insight as it relates to this project. I read through it and wanted to make sure that I understood what, what has been printed here.
Basically, they'll build one building here, and they'll have an area displaying some of their fencing types in the front, and then they'll have storage in the back.
So it's a sign company that, is that right?
Fence company, yes.
And there wasn't any protests at the planning commission?
No protests. It's consistent with the zoning pattern to the north along this.
Okay.
Shouldn't be any problem with it.
It's been moved in second in reference to number five. Vote. Passed. B has been deferred.
Yes, it has, to May 31st.
C is in Ward 6.
It's a partial closing of an alley easement, of an alley.
It's been moved in second. Vote. Passed. D is also Ward 6 and Ward 7.
D has been deferred till May 31st.
May 31st? E is also in Ward 7, and this is a permit for cremation service at 4040 North Styles, and I haven't received any protest in reference to this. I believe it's consistent with the, the area that, the industrial area that it's proposed to be at, and have you received any comments or any protests?
No, the surrounding property is mostly zoned industrial. We do have the easement on this, so...
It's been moved in second. Vote. It passed. F's Ward 1.
This is an automobile dealership that has been there for quite a while. I think they, they actually, for some reason, they let it lapse to a point where they had to come back and get it, but it's, it's been, they're going to do the same thing that's been there for quite a while, as I understand it, so... Are you representing the owner?
Yes.
And do we have anybody? And do we have anybody protesting this here? There wasn't any protest at planning, Bob, right? I move F1.
It's been moved in second on F1. Vote.
I'll move F2.
F2 has been moved in second, so vote. G is public hearing regarding ordinances relating to motor vehicles and traffic, amending chapter 32 of the Oklahoma City Municipal Code by amending section 32-1 of Article 1 regarding the definition of bicycle routes and adding a definition for recumbent bicycle.
Vice Mayor, we had a presentation on this last week. This will be the second week of a three-week process of doing this, and this is the public hearing portion of it. We'd be happy to answer any questions that the council may have in regard to this.
Move the item.
Do you have a question?
I have a question. Just a minor comment. I think that the ordinance has got some, it's well-written, there's a few places I wish it was a little stronger. However, I think that the overall answer to this issue is not an ordinance, no matter how good it is. It's a matter of both parties, the bicyclists, the automobile drivers, using some common sense and courtesy on the roads. Share the road is an established concept, we've had it in Oklahoma for a long time, and I just think this is a step further, but it's got to be based on a common understanding of each other's problems, common courtesy, and common sense.
And, sir, I agree with that, and I think public education will be an important component of that, and we'll be rolling out a public education, a public engagement portion of this in the near future.
And in that regards, I would encourage whoever's in charge of that to try to enlist the support of the state in revising the operator's manual for the driver's license test to include some information on the share the road concept and the rights and responsibilities of automobiles and bicycles in regards to each other.
Any other comments? I believe there's, you already had a motion, right?
A motion? I don't know if we got a second or not.
Second. All right. Passed. And H is a public hearing regarding ordinances relating to motor vehicles and traffic amended the Oklahoma City Municipal Code.
Mr. Vice Mayor, this has to do with the impoundment of vehicles, and this will bring us into more of a conformance with state law. Again, we had a presentation on this at the last council meeting, and this is the public hearing portion, and staff would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Yes, councilman?
I'd like to ask the chief a question, if I could.
Sure.
Vice Mayor?
It's Mr. Chief City.
I'll bet he'll be here shortly. Hopefully quickly.
Here he is. Chief, we were addressing the issue of the public hearing on the impoundment ordinance, and Councilman McAtee had a concern.
Yeah, I'm in favor of it, chief, but I've been approached by a couple of citizens who indicated that they got the idea that the police might not be, when this goes into effect, enforcing this the way they would like. They would like every vehicle that does not have an insurance sticker to be impounded, and they got the idea from talking informally with some of the police officers that maybe because of the paperwork that would be involved in this and the time that we're involved, that it might not be enforced quite as aggressively as they would like. I wonder if you'd have any comments on that?
Well, the officers will, the officers will still have discretion, as they do, on any traffic enforcement that they deal with, but we're going to encourage the enforcement of, you know, of not having insurance as long as they can verify it. It is going to take some time. Currently, the state has a system that we will use in access, a statewide system for insurance verification, but that's not always, you know, completely accurate. I mean, somebody could still have an insurance verification form, but the state not show that they have one. There would have to be some discretion left up to the officers, and we certainly don't want to impound somebody's vehicle that actually does have insurance, but yet the system doesn't show it. So it will take some time on the officer's part, but unless they can absolutely specifically verify that they don't have the insurance, then the vehicle will not be impounded. That's correct.
Does that?
Move the item.
It's been moved in second, it's down to vote. Passed. And I is a public hearing regarding ordinances relating to parks, recreation, and cultural affairs, amending chapter 38, Article 5, Division Y of Oklahoma City Municipal Code.
Mr. Vice Mayor, again, this was introduced last week. This has to do with the parking on Lake Heffner Drive after 11 o'clock at night when the park is closed.
Move the item.
And J is a public hearing regarding ordinances relating to zoning and planning, Article 4.
Yes, Mr. Vice Mayor, this just brings the city zoning code into conformance with state law in regard to the calculation of protest or zoning applications. Right now, our state law says you calculate, you count all property within 300 feet, and our zoning code says you exclude publicly-owned property, so this would just coincide with state law.
Move the item.
Can I ask a question? Tell me how, explain to me how that works. Can you give me an example of when it wasn't counted and when it was counted, so I could...
Yes, you take all property within 300 feet of the exterior boundaries of your property to be rezoned, and if protests are filed by individual owners, you determine the percentage of the protests based on the total number of owners within 300 feet.
So the city would be counted as an owner?
Correct.
Under the new ordinance, and would not have been counted as an owner under the old?
Correct.
That's all there is, that's really the only difference?
The city or the county or...
Okay.
Right, exactly.
The percentage is based on the number of owners, not on the amount of property they own?
Excuse me, two different bases for that, but one of the bases is the number of owners.
Does the amount of property they own come into the equation at all?
I'd have to look specifically, look at the statute again. I can get with you after the meeting and let you know, or I can go get the statute now.
That's, after the meeting, it's fine, it's just a...
Sure.
So it's been moved in second, it's vote. Passed. K is an ordinance to be introduced, set for public hearing, May 31st, and final adoption on June 14th, and I believe we have a presentation from Mr. Bob Teener.
This is the new National Electrical Code, and Bob Teener is here from Development Services to go over some of the high points of it.
Just briefly, this, excuse me, this item would replace the 2002 code. We sent public notice to all the registered electrical contractors that do business in Oklahoma City. Our Electrical Building Board of Appeals held public hearings, and they've recommended approval or adoption of this new code, that's the 2008 code. We have letters from the National Electrical Contractors Association and the Independent Electrical Contractors Association, both supporting this proposal or this ordinance. There's really two primary changes. The first is it would require tamper-proof outlets throughout the house, and then the second would be the placement of arc fault circuit interruptors in all the rooms except the kitchens and the bathrooms. That type of circuit breaker has been required in the bedrooms since 2002, and now this will be throughout the house. The kitchen and the bathrooms are covered by a different type of breaker. Those are the major changes. The home builders, they did make a comment that they felt that this could increase the price of a home about $600. That's in the financial impact report. So this is the introduction, the public hearing will be on the 31st for an adoption on June 14th.
May I ask a question, your honor? As I understand, the city has the option of adopting these codes in part. There's some things we can not adopt in these national codes. In this particular instance, did we adopt the entire code as it was written by the National Bureau?
Yes, in this case, we are.
Okay, good, thank you.
It's been moved in second, it's vote. Passed. So K is the, it's two, can we get a... Been moved in second on K2. L, public hearing regarding dilapidated structures, and I believe we've already... There's one that's been stricken, so the remaining items on L1. L2, resolution declaring the structures as dilapidated? That's all of them, okay, all right. I believe on M, public hearing regarding dilapidated structures in historic preservation landmark district. A, 818 Northwest 24th, it's in Ward 2. And... Any comments? Ward, that's on Ward 7. Is that right? You moved all of them together, okay. Well, you have a citizen here on, I believe it's 117 Northwest 28, Ms. Irma Smith. Is her, Irma Smith?
I haven't been here before, so I don't know what I'm supposed to do.
Ma'am, if you would get to the mic right there?
Right here.
Pull it down a little bit.
All right.
This is your opportunity to address the councilman.
About the house. Um, okay. The house is indeed old, and it does, we fixed it up before in 95, but it's falling apart again. In two years, the house will be 100 years old, according to the abstract on it. I have been ill, but I'm doing much better, and I'm trying to finish probating it. It is listed in Antonell. She died in 1980, and her son in 92. I have been, is Betty Bell here?
No, her daughter's here.
Okay, good. Okay. Antonell had a son and a daughter. You are the...
Ma'am.
Daughter, yeah.
I, I...
So we wish that we would be granted more time to try to get. I have already contacted Legal Aid, they're going to help me with that part of it, and the Council, Community Action Center, I have talked with them, and they're going to do the other part of it. So my request is for more time, please, because I only got this 10 days ago.
Well, Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Are you the owner of the property?
Well, the lady that, whose name it is in died.
She's not the owner.
Well, we don't get to have one person to speak that has signed up, ma'am, so have you, have you had some conversation with our staff in reference to this project?
Yes. Mr. Bumpus, I want to see him.
Mr. Bumpus, I think that if you will continue to work with Mr. Bumpus, I think that they could give you some assistance and direction in reference to this, okay? We can't make any issues in reference to who's the owner and who's not the owner, so...
No, uh-uh, that's Legal Aid.
Okay, all right. So do you understand the process? You need to work with Mr. Bumpus.
With him, okay, 'cause I don't know, that's why I'm asking.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Vice Mayor, can we see a picture of the other house, the one that's in Ward 2? Mr. Vice Mayor, Danny Bumpus, Chief Inspector, Code Enforcement. There is one additional party here who wishes to address the council on behalf of Ms. Betty Bell, ownership of 117 Northwest 28. If the council would entertain that, it's part of the, it's part of the case and the dispute about ownership and interested parties. If the council is open to Ms. Lawanda Smith.
Thompson.
She's requesting to address the council.
What's your full name, please?
Lawanda Thompson.
Lawanda Thompson?
Yes.
Okay, and Ms. Thompson, what's your interest as it relates to 117 Northwest 28?
My grandmother owned the property, my mother, Betty Bell, who lives in San Diego, so I'm here for her, and the property, actually, Ms. Smith is there illegally. She's just went in, but not to go into that. We're not actually interested in redoing it or anything. My mom actually wants to either sell it or go ahead and have it leveled, because it is in very, very bad shape, and have, and she has no intentions of fixing it.
Well, it sounds like that this is what happens in a lot of these properties, is that you have issues in reference to who the rightful owner and legal owner is of the property. And if this property is, is subject to probate proceedings, then, you know, that's something that the council has absolutely no jurisdiction over. So, you know, I just think that, you know, the notice, wherever the notice is being given to those individuals who are occupying the property, and either somebody needs to file a probate and get this matter on...
Yeah, the notice was sent to my mother, and then she, in reference, sent it to me to come.
Is there a probate?
No.
How long, how long ago did the owner pass away?
It's been almost 30 years.
Ms. Smith, we can't, we can't have one person at a time, and she has the podium now.
It's been 20-plus years, she's been deceased for a long time, and at that point in time...
And you don't know of any probate?
No, sir, I do not.
Well, that's how you solve this.
Yes.
I mean, you don't solve it...
Oh, I agree.
Any other way.
Right.
There isn't any alternative method.
Right.
You have to go to the courthouse and find out who owns it, and then that person stands up and decides what to do.
Right.
So that's what all of you need to do. I mean, this is really not a dispute that needs to be here.
Right.
Well, we've already had a vote on this, as I understand. Is it motion, is it motion, Mr.? Mr. Bumpus?
Just see, Mr. Vice Mayor?
Has a concern of the property that's adjacent, well, no, not adjacent, it's actually the other property that's listed in M, which is Ward 2, is that right, councilman?
Yes, this is it, right here.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And there's no one, no one is...
Code enforcement has received no contacts concerning 819 Northwest 24th Street, this... I was actually following up on the comment from, from the planning department, where it says demolition of the house would have an adverse effect on the historic district, and it contributes to, but if there's no one to stand up to take care of it, the condition that it's in, I'm willing to let it go.
We have a motion to approve of that.
Second?
I'll move it.
That's...Public hearing regarding unsecured structures, there's four items that's been, actually, seven items that's been stricken from, from this docket, and I believe we have...
I and Q.
I and Q. One person has requested to be heard. Is it Lisa Navarro? Lisa Navarro? Is it eleven thirty-six Northwest eleventh? Is that the property?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I was stricken. I was stricken.
Okay. You're here to speak on several items on the unsecured structures.
Yeah, that picture right there, that's, you can see it's all being boarded up. We have someone over there working on it.
Could you speak more to the mic, please?
Right there, you can see that that's all being boarded up, but it's three structures on this property, and the one that it's talking about for the demolition and something, this one right here, that's the middle one, but it only shows us two on the paper. This picture right here is one that we have to be ready to be tore down. But it's listed as two on this, and it's saying a garage apartment, but that's not, that's one little junky something right there to be tore down.
So your plan is to demolish it?
To, yeah, the middle one, not this one. This one is boarded up now, but the one, the little one that you just seen, if you go, that one, no...
That's not all one property?
No, it's three structures on one. All the rest of that has been boarded up, but this middle small house that you first showed, it looked like a, going in a cave, right there, that's a different total structure, and that's the one that's going to be demolished, taken down, and the other two have been secured.
But at this eleven thirty-six Northwest eleventh?
Yes. They're not showing the front of this, but this is a one little story house right there. That's going to be, I have the papers started to do the permit to have that tore down. See, the rest of them is being boarded, it's more boarded up than that now.
And have you communicated that to Mr. Bumpus?
I went to, over to Neighborhood Enforcement, and I talked to, is it Prazo? Uh, Ms. Shelby, Rosemary Shelby, and...
Inspector Shelby.
Yeah.
Inspector Shelby.
So...
So she's been buying, she has current pictures where it's all boarded all up and everything.
So it's no longer unsecured?
No.
Okay.
And it's given a thirty-day notice, but also on the demolition, I was saying we are in the process of getting the permits for the middle one to be tore down.
Okay, okay. And...
We just, we just approved the demolition of the house, the one in the middle that you're talking about. Code enforcement would definitely meet with her. I have not met with her, but we will receive her, her demolition process information and work this out, do a follow-up. We acknowledge that there was securing activity at the time. We were taking pictures for slides there, for this presentation, there was some securing activity, but it was not fully compliant at that time, but we have every intention of, of working it out.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll meet with her just as soon as we leave here and gather that information.
And Ms. Navarro, was there another property, or is this the only property?
It's three structures on this property.
Okay.
It's all the same address?
It's all the same address?
Right.
Is that right? Okay, okay.
By leaving it on the docket, as long as you're making improvement and you're keeping in touch with the city people, then no other action will be taken.
Okay. You said that it was approved for demolition? What was this one?
There's a thirty-day time period granted at this juncture right now. It approved for conditions at this time, that if progress is not made towards the removal or repair of the building, then the city would move forward, but in your situation...
I'm already doing it.
We will work it out.
Okay.
We will meet as soon as we complete this little deal.
Thank you.
So the remaining items on M, we need a motion. At this time, we, we're going to deviate just a little bit from, from the agenda. Is it Paseo group?
Yes.
Are they here? Yes.
Lauren, Doug.
Do I need to take her the mic?
No, she's making fun. Our magical creatures have arrived this morning. This is part of the Stardance Swan group that resides on Paseo, and they come out during the Ferry Ball and special events in Paseo. And Joe, I'd like, Joe Weiss is our new executive director.
Ms. Lori Keller is also with us, and Lori was the artist this year for our Paseo Arts Festival poster and all the designs that you'll see in all of our ads, and we wanted to present a copy of our Fight Art poster to the council.
And the Paseo Arts Festival will be...
Memorial Day weekend, and that's on Saturday, Sunday, and Monday, May twenty-eighth through twenty-ninth and the thirtieth. And we invite everyone to come, lots of fun, lots of food, lots of art.
At this time, we have a matter that we have decided that we will go into executive session.
For the audience, we anticipate this to be a short executive session, it'll just be a few minutes.
We reconvened from the executive session. The next item on the agenda is O., P., revocable wife use permits, Kathy's Closet Incorporated to hold Kathy's Market on Paseo. And we have Mr. Ted Poole and Ray Vincent.
Ted Poole, that's right. I guess all of that.
State your full name for the record Ted and your address.
Ted Poole, Middle initial N. This is Ray Vincent. You guys know Kathy and Craig over here. Kathy Jacobson, Craig Travis, her son. We just want to take a minute to talk about the fact that you've got a staff recommendation that recommends the approval. You've got a court injunction that says that you can't just order one revocable permit like you have been doing apparently over the years. Kathy operates as Kathy's Market on Paseo. She's going to have like eighty-five artists and ten food vendors, one hundred and eighteen booths, not one hundred and forty-six like the PAA said in their flyer they sent around. They, PAA's got ninety-three booths and about ten plus or minus food vendors. They're not a property owner. Kathy is. There's, she's got a couple of lots for some parking there for her people. And those that don't park in the two lots that she's got there, parked down on Twenty-Fourth That Judge Dixon said that everywhere else in Oklahoma City, they get around according to what he was told by the Oklahoma City representatives. The city issues some five-hundred-plus revocable permits for the various other festivals that they've got around there. I was absolutely awestruck by the fact, the timing of the PAA's little thing, that little show they put on here just a while ago. I'll have to say, I've been representing cities and towns for some forty years and people, representing people that have business with cities and towns for over forty years. I've never seen anything quite like that. That's a new one for me. I assume the council's seen the court order and the staff recommendation. That's pretty much, that's pretty much what we need to say. Hopefully, that's what you guys discussed back in your executive session. I hope, if you haven't seen the court order or the staff recommendation, we'll be more than happy to show it to you. So, is it safe to assume that everybody's seen it? Okay. This is Ray Vincent. He wants to say a word.
I only have a couple of things to add. The Paseo Arts Association wants to put on their festival, and they're asking for a revocable permit also. And Kathy wants to also be issued a revocable permit. You know, you passed an ordinance establishing guidelines for getting one of these permits to deal with problems that may arise like restrooms, parking, and that sort of thing. And Kathy applied for a permit and showed that she's taking care of all those things, and staff has recommended it be approved. It doesn't overlap with the Paseo Arts application. The Judge Dixon says you can have more than one. You can't enforce that provision that says you can only have one. I'd just like to add that the Paseo Arts Association has done a good job, and you should give them their revocable permit. Kathy's Jacobson has been doing this for ten years now. She's met all the qualifications, and we're asking you to give her a permit. It's going to be good for the Paseo District. It's going to be good for Oklahoma City. It's going to bring in people. It's going to bring in more people. That's what, that's what this is all about. So, we're asking you that you go ahead and approve her revocable permit.
Would you state your full name and your address, please?
Okay, my name is Abdurrahman Mohammed. My address is Fort Worth Northwest Twenty-Sixth.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
And you had signed up to speak on this issue of the revocable permit?
Yes, sir.
Okay, for the Paseo Arts District?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I own Dewey between Thirtieth and Twenty-Ninth. There's, our land is over there. It's on the corner of Twenty-Ninth and Dewey. And I sell the close Thirtieth. And there is four owners, or two owners actually, in the west side of Dewey and the north-east side of Dewey. I am the owner of southeast of Dewey. They have access to all the cars, to all the tenants, except me. And I don't know why. And it seems to me, because I'm a foreigner, and the other owners are whites, so they prevent me from having access to the street. And this is discrimination.
Sure, Councilman Shadid. Do you have access from Twenty-Ninth Street to the property?
Yeah, but they block it.
Who blocks it?
All the people. They park over there.
They park their car on Twenty-Ninth?
Yeah, the people, the people park their cars on Twenty-Ninth Street, so it's very hard to have an access to my property from Twenty-Ninth Street.
But the city hasn't, the city has kept access on Twenty-Ninth open?
No one enforces it, sir. I'm telling you that on the two sides, there is people parking, and there is no any sign that don't park on it.
So, are you asking that it be enforced?
No. I'm not asking it to be enforced. You can enforce it if you want. If you don't want to enforce it, it's up to you. But what I'm saying is, if you open Twenty-Ninth, I mean Dewey, from Thirtieth, for everyone, I have to use it. If you want to close it, I have no problem.
They keep guards on it and let people in.
Dude, we under...
That's what I said.
Right now, we're talking about a different permit. I mean, if we want to address this now, but you're... That would be for the Paseo permit. Right now, we're talking about Kathy's permit, which is southwest of Paseo.
There are two specific permits being addressed today. The permit, the first one is Kathy's permit, and I don't believe that shuts down Twenty-Ninth Street. However, the next permit with the Paseo Association does impact Twenty-Ninth Street. Staff, am I correct on that?
Is anyone from your staff here? The way it will be soon.
It's the same festival, but the, but the permit that we're dealing with right now does not, the boundaries of it does not affect what you're talking about. That's coming up in the next permit that we're getting ready to talk about.
Okay, they called me.
I know.
Okay, so it's not my mistake.
We're going to take a oops.
Okay. So, you wanted me to go back or what?
I want you to stay right there.
Okay.
All right. Dan, there's been a comment made in reference to Mr. Mohammed's property on, is it on Dewey? The northwest?
It's on Dewey and Twenty-seven, or Twenty-Ninth.
Twenty-Ninth and Dewey?
Yes.
The northwest corner?
South-east.
Southeast corner?
Yes, sir.
It sounds like that one of the requested permits would not have an impact or affect his property, and maybe the other permit would have a, are you saying it's going to have a negative impact on your parking?
I'm Betty Smith. I'm Mohammed's wife. And what they do is, there's a barrier on Dewey, and they keep guard on it. They have people from the Artists Association that keep guard on it. And they open it up for, they keep the beer trucks on that, and the, well, the beverage trucks of all kinds on Dewey. And they open the gate to let them in, they open the gate to let parking in their artist parking, which is on the northwest corner, and they, they open it up for people to park in the area surrounding the apartment house that's on the southeast corner. But if someone wants to come to our property to park, which is really a great service to them, they block them. And they sent me a letter last year, telling me if we touched that barrier, that they would have me arrested. But at the same time, they move it anytime they want to, to permit who they want to. And by the way, that's against their contract, because their contract says they cannot charge people to move the barrier, but they charge the, within their applicant, their fees for the artists, they charge for the parking that they have on the, let me see, the southwest corner, pardon me, northwest corner. So, what is sauce for the goose is sauce for the gainer. We want either open or closed. If it's open, it's open for us, and if it's closed, it's closed for everybody. And the year before last, we had a really nice arrangement there. One side of it was open, and, and so people could come in off Thirtyth onto Dewey, use our facility, and, and then easily exit. There's a big wide driveway there. And the, actually, what they're calling our access on the Twenty-Ninth Street is just a little parking pad. There is a small curb cut, but when there's, there's traffic on both sides of Twenty-Ninth, which there were last year, and nobody enforces that lane opening there, then you've got just one narrow lane. If somebody is going west and somebody's going east, somebody has to stop and back up. And there's no, and if you need an ambulance or you need a fire truck in there.
Ms., can I, can I ask a question?
Yes.
You do not, you don't live at this property, correct?
I live just a few blocks from there.
Okay, so you don't live at this property?
On Walker and Twenty-Ninth.
Right, so you don't, nobody lives at this property. Do you charge people to park on this empty lot?
Yes, we do.
So, that really goes to the core of the issue, is that this is a revenue generator, this is a lot that nobody lives at, that you want access for people to be able to park and then charge for parking? Is that correct?
Yeah, essentially.
Okay.
The festival starts on Monday. When we go and check the land, the big...
On Friday.
On Friday, the big trucks and big, what do they call it? Vans, already parking on the property, that the people, they already, the arts coming from everywhere to participate in this Paseo deal. So, we can close the whole deal, and we're going to create big problem if we ask the police to come and evict these people and move all these big trucks while everyone already parked and the festival already started. So, we have to be over there to manage this property.
What I hear you saying is that you want uniform application of, if people have access to park in the empty lot at Dewey and Thirtyth on the southwest corner, you want them to have access at Dewey and Twenty-Ninth as well?
And Thirtyth. Dewey and Thirtyth.
You, I thought you owned Dewey and Twenty-Ninth.
Yes.
We are on the corner.
Right.
On the corner.
The long part of our land is, the hundred and sixty feet is on Dewey.
Right. Dan, I mean, what is the legality of using this land for, to charge for parking?
It's private property, it can be used for parking for lawful purses, for lawful purpose. There's a question of whether or not it is lawful for them to park cars on an unpaved surface. But that really doesn't have anything to do with the access issue. And they're really not talking about the application of Kathy's Closet. They're talking about the Paseo Arts Association. And the Paseo Arts Association permit closes all of Dewey from Thirtyth to the alley north of, the alley between Thirtyth and Twenty-Ninth. And that's, I think, what the gentleman's talking about. That completely blocks his access to his property from Thirtyth.
May I ask a question?
Sir.
Mr. Mohammed.
Yes, sir.
Because it sounds like we could be here forever. And the point that I think that you're trying to make is, as Councilman Shadid stated, that in the past, you've been able to have ingress and egress to your property for parking purposes. Is that correct?
Yeah, from Thirtyth.
Okay. And, and, and it sounds like that you had an agreement with the Paseo...
No, we didn't have agreement with Paseo.
Well, who were you working with when you said that there was an arrangement?
The city of Oklahoma City.
That you had an arrangement with the city of Oklahoma City to allow you to have parking? Is that the arrangement that you were talking about?
Mr....
No, go ahead, go ahead.
I mean, you said that you had...
We had, we had a staff member that went out there the year before last. the year before last and observed the situation and saw what we were asking for was reasonable. And he moved the barrier, half of the barrier on 30th Street down to the alley that's halfway between Dewey, that's down Dewey, halfway between 29th and 30th. And that allowed access to our driveway there.
That was satisfactory for you in reference to?
It was beautiful. And everyone told us that that worked better than any... I'll give you his name in just a minute.
Well, have you talked with the permit? Yeah, the permitting. Have you talked to the permittees in reference to working that arrangement out?
We have never been invited to any of their planning. We're never notified. They say in their application that they notify business owners, but they don't notify us as a property owner when they're meeting to discuss this and make the arrangements and decide what's going to be closed and what's going to be open. We've had a lot of animosity from them, and it's not based on anything we did. Because people park in our parking and go and buy things from them and love having that parking there because it's so convenient. So we're good to them, but they have fought us like tigers. And I think it's nothing but the name Muhammad.
Also, sir, there is no handicapped parking in the festival. So most of the people, they come and park with us, all of them handicapped. And the business people, they rent a booth from the Paseo area. And actually, it's very hard on me to do this business, the parking and all this stuff. I can close the whole deal, and no one will park on it. But how I'm going to do with the artists, that they park their rigs on Friday. And we called the police many times, and they just tell us, it's okay, it's okay, just next year, next year. Every time is next year. So we have to solve this problem. And the easiest way is to have access to 30th on Dewey.
I've got a couple of questions, but I don't know how much further we can go with this conversation when we're not on this item yet. I mean, we're not dealing with this permit that this one deals with right now.
This really has to do with the Paseo Arts District, and this is the item at hand, is the Kathy's permit.
I would suggest, if you don't mind sitting down for just a second, let's deal with the one that we're on right now, and then we'll get, I've got some questions based on your comments for the next one coming up.
Let's move on to the revocable right-of-way use permit, Kathy's Closet Incorporated. And it's in Ward 2. It's been moved in second in reference to the permit for Kathy's Closet Incorporated. Done vote. Now moving on to P2, which is Paseo Arts Association. They hold a Paseo Arts Festival, May 28th and May 30th. Also Ward 2.
Good morning. My name is Karen Orr. I'm president and chairman of the Board of the Paseo Arts Association. I live at 5112 Brook Hollow Drive, Oklahoma City. And this is our 35th Annual Paseo Arts Festival. And we're here today. I thought we would get a chance to speak before the first revocable was approved, but apparently, that's not the case. But we're here to try to continue to protect the urban conservation district known as Track 5, or the Paseo Arts District. Paseo is a unique, special area that's three-block-long, commercial area, and it is totally surrounded by neighborhoods. We're listed on the National Register of Historic Places, and last year was voted one of the top 10 neighborhoods in the entire United States by the American Planning Association, a distinction never before given to any other area in the state of Oklahoma. The Paseo Arts Association, or the PAA, is a nonprofit organization that has hosted the annual Memorial Day Festival for the past 34 years. This is our 35th anniversary. As to the demonstration or whatever the attorney was relating to, for 35 years, we have come before this council, before each and every festival, and have presented you with a framed, signed, fine art poster. And that is what was done today. We have worked diligently each year to improve the event attractions, the art exhibited, and the attendance of the public. It is now a premier art event, attracting over 60,000 visitors a year. The profits derived from this festival each year is reinvested into our community in the form of a children's program and community partnerships that enrich everyone's lives in Track 5. You may have read the article in the paper recently about our after-school arts program we call PEAPS. It's the Edgemere Elementary After-School Arts Program. We've also recently teamed these kids with the students at Harding Fine Arts Academy for joint projects with Paseo artists. 10 years ago, we started experiencing infringement on our festival by a member of the community. It started out small and has steadily grown every year since. We finally asked for help from this body last year to limit the density of outside vendors after experiencing a fire and a live electrical line coming down in the middle of Dewey Street. The emergency services couldn't even get all the way to the scene because of the parking congestion. An ordinance was voted on and passed by this governing body to limit the number of revocable permits to one for a given time period in the interest of public safety and the greater good of both the public and the surrounding residents. This ordinance did not eliminate the outside event. It merely kept the event confined to the organizer's private property and the property she leases each year for that weekend. It ensured the public right-of-ways and sidewalks were clear for pedestrian traffic, provided access, egress, and the ability for emergency services to be able to perform their function if required. The PAA has done everything possible to ease the stress on the surrounding residents during the festival. This year, the First Christian Church on Northwest 36th and Walker is allowing the use of their massive parking lot for festival attendee parking. And the PAA is providing a shuttle bus to take attendees to the festival and back to the church free of charge. We are also reducing the volume of the music at both ends of Paseo and are instituting a green area to recycle the trash generated by such large crowds. An MC unit will also be based out of Paseo for the weekend. Last year, when the ordinance was in effect, the outside organizer still managed to accommodate almost 100 vendors. And this year, the map provided to the city by that organizer shows that 104 vendors will be present on her private property and the property she leases. If the organizer is allowed a revocable permit, which you just gave her, that will add another 40 vendors. Each of these vendors brings with them at least one truck or trailer and at least two people. These extra vehicles spill over into the neighborhoods as she does not have adequate room to park them all. In comparison, the PAA will have 80 artists exhibiting this year. We had hundreds of applicants from well-qualified artists from all over the United States, but were mindful of the area and the residents that we operate in and only accepted 80 applications. I have letters of support from Edgemere Elementary School, Harding Fine Arts Academy, and the First Christian Church in Oklahoma City, if you'd like to see them. This council not only has the ability, but the duty to grant the appropriate number of revocable permits that will protect this very special part of Oklahoma City and its residents. But should you feel compelled to grant a second permit, which you've done, we ask that the vendors allowed to participate outside of our boundaries be limited to no more than the same number that the PAA will have. You did the right thing last year, and we're asking you to do the right thing this year. Any questions?
Well, I want a comment and then a question, but we don't have much time. We have a couple of weeks until Memorial Day. Judge Dixon has basically forced the hand of this council and said that if we pick one revocable permit or over the other, he will block that. We thus have two choices. Block, grant neither of the two, and cancel the Paseo Arts Festival in two weeks. Or grant both. I share some of your concerns, but that may need to be addressed by the council at a later time, perhaps with citywide ordinances or similar discussion. But at this late hour...
I understand.
We have a choice between canceling the event altogether or facing Judge Dixon, blocking. So...
But the city does have the ability to limit the number of outside vendors occupying that space and take in mind the residents in the surrounding neighborhoods and the density of the activity going on during that weekend.
We do have that authority. How many vendors would, will your festival have in the public streets? And how many vendors will Kathy's Closet have in the public streets?
She will have 104 on the private. And if she's added, if her revocable permit, according to the map that she turned into the city, would give her approximately 144. We have 80 vendors. I'm not quite sure how many.
Food vendors?
10 or 12 food vendors. And a face painter outside that, I believe.
Her private property, as long as she can get an outdoor seller's permit, she has the right to put however many vendors will fit on there in accordance with the ordinance. I was just talking about specifically in the public right-of-way.
But the other part of the outdoor seller's ordinance states that 25% of her property should remain free for public access. And it does not appear, there was four rows in her parking lot last year, and now there's six rows. I doubt very seriously if that constitutes 25% free space.
That would be on the outdoor seller's permit. It's really not.
And who addresses that?
That would be city staff, Department of...
City staff through licensing.
Right. So as those permits are issued, we will look into that.
Okay, thank you. Now, would you like to ask some questions about the situation on 29th and Dewey?
Yes, ma'am, I would. How would you propose that access would be ensured?
For as long as I can remember, we have done the same thing every year. We have given the Mohammonds access off of 29th Street. We block the area. We put a blockade on that street just to the west of their driveway on 29th Street. For the past several years, we have enforced, to the dismay of many attendees who have had their cars towed, we have enforced no parking on the south side of 29th Street, all the way down to Walker, so that people can get in and out of their lot. This year, we've moved the boundary to the center line, where his property begins on 20th, excuse me, on Dewey, down to 29th. We will park our trucks and ice vehicles and things on the west side of the street, so as not to even butt up against his curb line. The other thing that we have to contend with is directly south across the street from their lot is the children's art area. We have porta-pots there, and you know, cars can be as careful as they want to, but you can't always control children who will dart around. And so we're very mindful of only having one place to watch where cars are driving almost up to the barricades and getting into their lot. And we have to be very mindful of public safety, especially for the kids.
Now, did you offer to lease that land from him?
We asked at one point if we might be able to lease that, to use it for the children's area, but they came back with a figure that was just ridiculous. And we can't do it. We're a nonprofit. We don't have deep pockets. We couldn't do it.
So your proposal is you're just parking trucks on the west side of Dewey?
Yes, sir.
Not blocking the east side of Dewey?
Correct. But our artists park from 30th down to about where his property starts, behind the buildings. They're up on private property. We have to have someplace. If we don't park those trucks there, they're going to be parked in the neighborhood somewhere.
So you put somebody at your barricade at 30th and Dewey that lets people in and out?
No.
So we just, you just drive people?
We keep an eye on it. The police have kept an eye on it because he was over moving the barricade every time we turned around. But we only let artists in in the morning, and we let artists in at night. And occasionally, if they have to replenish ice, we may have to let somebody in there, but they call ahead and let us know, and then we move it, let them in. But that is not a traffic area for us. And again, because of the safety of the children's area right down the street. That is a stable, no-traffic area during the festival, during festival hours.
Ms. Orr, you stated that the the address of Mr. Muhammad's property, are you saying that during the time of the festival, that that area is blocked completely as far as part of your planned design of the festival?
I'm sorry, I didn't understand the question.
Well, let me just drop that and start out with this. Have you ever had a working relationship with Mr. Muhammad and Ms. Smith in reference to being able to park cars on his property and him having ingress and egress?
We've had conversations that, because we want cars parked on that lot. We need the parking, as you know, it's short.
You support the idea of allowing them to park cars on their property?
Correct, and that's why we've always given them access off of 29th. We've even told them that we would put signs on the barricade at 30th and Dewey, letting people know to come around to 29th Street, and there's additional parking. But any conversation you try to have, if it's not exactly what they want, it gets ugly in a hurry. And I'm not crazy about being called. A lot of things that probably a lot of sealers don't use. It's difficult to have a conversation with them, let's put it that way.
Counselwoman Mars?
But it does, I want to make this statement. It absolutely has nothing to do with their nationality. Absolutely nothing.
Thank you. Counselwoman Mars?
I've got a question for staff. Dan, it looks like if I look at those lines correctly for their revocable, the, what would be the east side of Dewey fronting the Muhammad's property is not included in the revocable permit?
That is correct.
Can a revocable restrict the ability of the property owner to park along that area that's not in the revocable?
No, sir.
It cannot?
No, it's open. It's a public street.
Okay. So their barricade on 29th, as they put it, that they claim gives them access to the lot does not give them access to the street that's not under the revocable on Dewey. And their barricade on Dewey at 30th does the same thing.
That's correct.
So in effect, the Muhammad's property, street property on Dewey, frontage, they do not have access to under this revocable.
That's correct.
And they can't do that. You've got to give them access to their street, can't you? Don't you?
They have access.
We were told by traffic that all we had to do was give them access.
I'm talking to staff, please. I'll get to you in a second.
They have access to their property. They have access to their property on one side. I think that is a valid restriction on the other one. They have access to their property.
But they don't have access to the street in front of their property?
No. Well...
They have access to the property off of 29th Street, but not off of Dewey.
But I'm talking about the street. The revocable does not cover half of the street. The east half of the street on Dewey fronting the Muhammad's property is not in the revocable permit.
Correct.
Do we have to give them access to that part of the street that's not in the revocable?
Not that I know of. We provided them access off of 29th Street, so they do have access. You're asking, do we have to give them access off of Dewey?
Do we have to give them access to the street? There's a part of the street in front of their property that's not covered under this revocable permit. Effectively, as the property owner, they would have right to that frontage along their property.
That is correct. At the intersection of 29th and Dewey, they should have access to 29th Street that abuts their property for the full length of their property, and they should have access to Dewey on the east half of Dewey for the full length of their property.
What would be the disadvantage of moving the barrier from 30th and Dewey south to allow them access to the northern part of their lot?
Because the general public comes in early and takes all the parking that we've reserved for the artists, and if one of them has to leave to go do something, there's somebody else that just whips right in, and then we've got artists parked blocks and blocks and blocks away. We've got to accommodate the visiting artists somehow. And by the same token, the revocable permit that you just awarded to Kathy Jacobson blocks access to John Robinson's building. He no longer has any access to his building during the festival.
Councilman White? Yes, Councilwoman Mars?
Well, I'm not trying to be obstinate about this, but if the Mohammonds were willing to control your barricade on Dewey to allow parkers to go straight to their lot and then back out again, is that acceptable to you? Not letting the public go up and down, but if they're willing to put, and I don't know whether they're even willing to do that or not, but if they were willing to put a person up there letting access come down Dewey to get into their lot?
I need to check with the festival committee, and I'm not, I'm only one person speaking on behalf of an organization. I do want to make the statement that we have tried for years and years and years to be accommodating and provide and offer compromises to both of these parties, and we've been rebuffed at every turn, so, you know, I don't know what else we can do.
Ms. Orr, and that was the point that I was trying to obtain or find out when the other, Mr. Muhammad and Ms. Smith was up here, because it sounds like that there has been a past relationship that has existed in reference to working out a way in which they could park cars on their property. And for whatever, whoever, last year, that was able to make things more accommodating to them, I don't know. But it just seems like that for such a short distance in reference to this frontage area that they are referring to, could that be worked out on behalf of your organization?
On paper, it looks like a short distance to you, but every square foot is important to us, and we were told by traffic control, I inquired about this years ago, and we've been told by the city over and over again, because the person who owns the large vacant lot at Northwest 28th and Walker also has two entrances to his property, and our revocable permit blocks one of those, and he has no problem as long as he has one access. City has told us over and over again, as long as we allow one access, then that is suffice to property owners, and that's what we have done year after year after year. And there was never an agreement to watch anybody's trucks or watch the barricades. People are making things up out of whole cloth.
Just a minute. Yes.
Now, I think there's a question of whether the lines as they were drawn in the permit are even correct.
Could you elaborate on that, Mr. Mars?
Do what?
Could you explain that to me further?
Well, it seems like the boundary of the revocable, as it sits right on this map, jogs over halfway between 29th and 30th and covers the east side also, which restricts that entire street under the revocable. And is our municipal council going to tell us that's, can't do that?
As far as I know, that it is drawn accurately. It's drawn the way it was intended to be, and you're correct in the way you're seeing it, that it, that the revocable excludes the west or the east half of Dewey from mid-block down to 29th Street.
Well, if it's excluded, then how does somebody get there?
Physically, you can't, because it's barricaded on 29th and it's barricaded on 30th.
It seems like if we exclude a substrate right-of-way from the revocable permit, it's, it seems inconsistent to deny access to that piece of road some way.
This is kind of a discussion that we had last year in relation to when we passed this. The abutting landowner owns to the center of the street, subject to the easement, so we're actually, when an abutting landowner objects, you're actually arguably trespassing upon his rights.
The lines were drawn exactly as they are because city council told us last year, if revocable, if a street to the center line, abutting up to a property owner's property, is included within the boundaries of a revocable permit, that property owner has the use of the right of that street to the center line, and they can use it any way they see fit. That's why we have gone around Kathy Jacobson's property. That's why we have gone around the Muhammad's property. We have to have some control over what activity is happening during our festival. It's our name up there. It's our reputation. Kathy puts up no signs indicating that she's anything but the Paseo Arts Festival, and we have to have some control. And I'll tell you, if this was happening at the downtown Oklahoma City Festival, this would not be happening.
Even though next week is a finance committee, if you wanted to defer this for a week, we could work on this issue.
I'd like to defer it. I, you know, the Paseo Arts Festival has become an institution. It's a very important part of our local culture, but I think there's got to be healthier ways towards conflict resolution, because this, just hearing about the history, I mean, there's, it's become personal. There is, just examples of poor conflict resolution on multiple parties. I'm wondering if we could even, if we could, if there was a mediator who is willing to sit down this week, perhaps with you and the Mohammonds, would you be willing to sit down with the mediator and try and come to a resolution this week?
Certainly. Speaking of mediators, we did bring one in to try to resolve issues with Kathy Jacobson a few years ago, and some agreements were reached, and none were honored on her part. So that's when negotiations break down and communications break down.
Mr. Muhammad, would you be willing to sit with the mediator and work with Ms. Orr and try and find a resolution? Okay, then I'll work to help make that happen, and I, thank you. Yes.
Ms. Jake, Ms. Orr, first of all, I want to say that by no way should you feel that this council has any less support for the Paseo Arts District and the Paseo Arts Association. And I remember when I first came to Oklahoma City that the Paseo area was a dying area, and I know what that development has occurred over there and how great it is and the recognition that it's received on a national basis.
Thank you.
I think that sometimes we forget that there are areas that, and jurisdictions that speak higher than we do, and so the issue that we had to address previously, in reference to our respect for the civil laws of the state of Oklahoma, we have to be respectful of what a court and a judge rules and directs. And so by no way does that mean that we do not support in any degree, because I think everyone up here has the highest regard for what you all do, the amount of time that you all put into this program, and what it does for Oklahoma City. And so I want to commend you for everything that you do, your leadership, but I just think that we're trying to get to an area of peace, and I think the best thing that we could do...
We would like that as well.
Is probably defer this for the next week. By no means does it have anything to do with the support of the organization, but because of this issue that we were not provided information prior to this morning, I think it would be healthy for everyone to try to get to some calmness and resolve this matter with a little bit of time, if you would allow us to do that.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Orr.
Mayor, if I could make a comment, please, because, and I just want to follow up with what both of you are saying. I don't want anybody to leave this room thinking that we've chosen sides in this argument, because in my opinion, we haven't. What you can't do is hold it against the council when people that have legal rights or legal issues force those issues to come up, and we have to rule depending on those issues. We're not choosing sides, but we would like that this had never come up to begin with. The festival went along for years, and these issues didn't come up, and there's enough feelings and issues on both sides of this to fill a hat, because I think that there's a valid argument from the Paseo Arts Association that Kathy's has never been participative in their advertising. She has benefited from the festival. She, I doubt very seriously if Kathy's on Paseo would be successful if it wasn't in conjunction with the Paseo Arts Festival drawing the people down there. That's neither here nor there. But the fact remains, she has the legal right as a property owner to do what she's requesting to do and to do what she wants to do, and the fact that she has pressed that legal issue, the fact that we have listened to the Mohammonds on their property and its boundaries in the revocable permit, you shouldn't hold it against this council that we're trying to choose sides or go against you at some point in time. It's just a sad state that a civil issue has gotten to this point, and the, I cautioned back when we changed the ordinance, that I thought that this was, we were trying to solve a civil issue by changing city ordinance, and that's a bad thing to do. Civil issues have a way to get resolved somewhere else, not here. But again, I just want, because I've got friends on both sides of this issue, and I don't want anybody to think that this council inclusive or city staff is trying to pick one side or the other, that you need to understand that when we get put in a position where we are directed and told the legal issues, then we have to deal with those. And please don't think that we're trying to choose sides on any of this, that the Paseo Arts Festival is a unique and dynamic event that has grown over the years, and I don't, there's a number, multiple people in Oklahoma City look forward to this weekend every year because they know the Paseo Arts Festival is going on, and I certainly hope that it will continue to go on, it will continue to be an extraordinary festival that they put on down there, and we will support as best we can. Please don't take anything we've done here as not being supportive of that.
Okay.
Councilwoman Shadie, did you make a motion?
I did.
Okay, we need a second. It's been moved in second. It's deferred for one week.
Our revocable permit?
Yes.
Excuse me, Mr. Shadie. Did you intend on Kathy to be in a mediation?
Beg your pardon?
Did he intend for Kathy to be a part of that mediation? Okay, good. Sorry, may I...
Moving on to Q, revocable right-of-way use permit for Perry Publishing Broadcasting, produced by Ralph Ellison Library, Juneteenth celebration.
Second, actually, before we vote on it, I'm just, that's also my 25th wedding anniversary, and I just, I would like to thank the library and Russell Perry's organization for doing so much to celebrate it. Thank you.
You still ought to buy flowers, Peter.
All right, do we, is there someone here from the Metropolitan Library? I see Mr. Michael Owens, who is the director of Metropolitan, Ralph Ellison Library?
Yes, thank you, Councilman Kelly.
Do you have a statement in reference to the revocable permit?
Yes, for the Juneteenth celebration.
Yes, okay. And did you have something to say?
Continuum Perry Publishing and Broadcasting.
Okay.
We're just excited to have the opportunity again to put on Juneteenth. It was a great festival last year for the community, and we just want to invite all of the council members to come out and be part of that, but it's a great opportunity for the community to come together and just have some fun and to celebrate a great event.
All right, well, thank you so much for your work at the library and the presentation of this program last year. I understand it was absolutely fantastic, so to the publishing company, Perry Publishing Company, and Mr. Michael Owens, who's director of Ralph Ellison Library Branch, thank you all, and we'll now have a motion.
Yes, we have.
Have a motion, is a second?
Yeah.
And it's good?
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to R, the revocable permit with a new leash on life incorporated, 5K run and a 3K dog job. Is there someone here? It's what, six and seven, so the Oklahoma River Trails? Moved in second. Pass. S, lease and management agreement with the Oklahoma City Economic Development Trust and the Merritt Gardens Foundation for Professional Management and Operations of the Merritt Gardens.
Your honor, although I've been assured it's not an issue, I think I would like to, if we could, vote on T first. T is, in my mind, at least, a step precedent to doing what is called for in S.
The lease agreement?
Yes, because I think we ought to have, the trust ought to have the authority to lease this property before we enter into a lease. It's just, I'd say it's a procedural issue. It probably doesn't make any difference, but it just was a little unsettling to me.
Legal, can you give us...
Yes, logically, they should be in reverse order. As Councilman Ryan pointed out, it's probably a procedural issue. Legally, you'd probably have the same effect, but logically, it should be reversed.
As opposed to S, then let's jump and go to T, which is...
I'm in approval on T.
The economic lease agreement with the Oklahoma City Economic Development Trust. Do you have someone here to... Do we have someone here to?
No one. No one's on this particular item. I think the speaker probably will be addressing the second item primarily.
Let me ask a question. If we approve the lease agreement today, would that, would it be inordinate to defer the management agreement if it becomes necessary later? Or if we're going to defer one of them, should we defer both of them?
If you're going to defer one, I would defer both.
Okay.
If you agree, if you vote on the lease agreement, then that ties you into?
Not necessarily, but practically, they're tied together.
Right.
That being said, I'd like to go in and hear from Jim today, right now.
On S?
That we can make a decision on whether either one he wants to talk about, but I think there is some, there's some need, in my opinion, that we defer this matter for a couple of weeks, but I don't want to, I don't want to, I want to hear it in the right order so that we, everybody has a chance to say what they want to say or ask any questions they have to ask.
Well, the two items are certainly, you know, closely related. I don't think you can separate them.
We wouldn't have presented T without S. They were, the intent was to bring them together.
Okay.
And if there's a feeling that we needed to defer this, I think we ought to defer both issues.
Okay. Well, other than that, I'd like to go in and hear from Mr. Talbert on whichever, I guess you're prepared to speak on S, really.
Actually, it matters not, because I think we go to, both go to the same issue.
All right, of course, we all know who you are, but we would like for the record, Mr. Talbert, to give you name and address.
Yes, I'm Jim Talbert. I'm the emeritus chairman of the Myriad Gardens Foundation. I would, if it's possible, Mr. City Manager, for Kathy O'Connor to present this from the city side, and then I'd be glad to respond to develop the foundation side of it.
That's fine with me, it's up to the councils.
Sure.
So, now we will have a presentation from Ms. Kathy O'Connor.
Yes, I think she's somewhere close by.
Kathy?
Thank you. We've been working for several months with the Myriad Gardens Foundation to develop a new management agreement and lease for the Myriad Gardens. The Myriad Gardens Foundation was created in 1981 as a organization who raised money, both capital and operating funds, for the Myriad Gardens, and has played a very active role in promoting and providing additional funding for the gardens. When we began to work on the renovation of the Myriad Gardens as a part of Project 180, the foundation came to us and asked if the city would be interested in entering into a more complete management agreement that allowed the foundation to take over the maintenance and operating responsibilities for the Myriad Gardens. In particular, they were interested in increasing the programming and revenue generating activities that are a part of the Myriad Gardens. The new renovated gardens have a lot more rentable space and amenities that we hope generate additional revenues for the garden in the future. The restaurant, the ice skating rink are some of the maybe more apparent features in the new gardens, but even some of the public spaces like the grand lawn and others will create better revenue generating opportunities in the future. Under the agreement that is presented to you today, the foundation has several rights and requirements that are a part of the agreement, and those include the right to operate the park and produce and promote events, to charge admission, sell tickets, set rates and fees, advertise for events, and promote events. They have the right to operate and manage the ice skating rink and the restaurant, to enter into concession agreements or contracts for food and catering and other kinds of concessions that might be available in the gardens. In some of these kinds of parks in other cities, there might be a model boat concession, for example, or some other things like that that are a part of the new operating of the gardens. The term of the initial agreement is 25 years, and each year, there'll be the opportunity for the foundation and the city to sit down together and develop what the operating budget will be, what the city's contribution will be, and what the foundation's contribution will be. Our original goal when we began working with the foundation was to develop an agreement that provided that one-third of the funding for the park would be provided by the city, and then the other two-thirds would be raised by revenues generated by the park itself or through private sponsorships and other kinds of philanthropy. So, in effect, it would get the operating expenses for the park at about what the city's budget was before the Myriad Gardens closed for renovation and maybe a little bit less. So, our goal is to reduce the level of city funding that goes towards the maintenance and operation of the parks over time, and the goal is to accomplish that by 2014. That's stated in the agreement. Some of the other features of it, of the agreement, are that the employees that are responsible for the maintenance and operations of the gardens will be provided by the city in the first year, and there's a list of those employees that's included in the agreement. And there's recognition that over time, the labor necessary to maintain the gardens will be assumed by the foundation, and as the foundation assumes more of that labor burden, the number of city employees will reduce over time, and the city's contribution towards the maintenance of the gardens will reduce over time. The agreement, and you mentioned this a little bit earlier, Item T leases the gardens and the property across the street that we call the vitograph properties to the OCEDT, and then, well, not the, no, not the vitograph properties, those are already the OCEDTs, I guess. It leases the garden to the OCEDT, and then they enter into this long-term agreement with the foundation. The management agreement does provide for the maintenance and operation of what's called the vitograph properties, which were, which the economic development trust loaned the money to the foundation to purchase, and now the foundation would like to transfer those properties back to the economic development trust and lease them through this agreement. I think that pretty much wraps up the provisions that are a part of the agreement. Mr. Talbert may have a few other things that he'd like to discuss, but I did want to go over the funding that's required for the gardens. The city's budget, and this is for next fiscal year, for fiscal year 2012, includes funding of about $2.7 million for the Myriad Gardens, and that there is the $500,000 management fee that is a part of this agreement, and then about $600,000 in revenues to be generated by the park, and an additional about $350,000 that will be provided by the foundation towards the operations of the park. So, the foundation's piece of this is about $1.5 million. The $2.6 million that I mentioned earlier does include that $500,000 management fee, so we have to be careful not to double count that when we're thinking about the numbers. But I just wanted to kind of go through those. So, there's about $600,000 worth of revenues that are to be generated by the park. I think it's important to remember that not everything in the park will be up and running at 100% on July 1, that there's some features that will still be under construction and really won't be fully operational until September, October.
Like a restaurant?
Like the restaurant, yes, in particular, the restaurant, which we hope will be one of the major revenue generators for the property. So, the revenue estimate is, we believe, very conservative at this point, and we hope to see some pretty dramatic increases in revenues that are generated by the park in the future. If you have any other questions or comments, we'd be glad to try to answer them.
The only comment I would make is, we need to keep in mind that the long-term, one of the long-term benefits of this is the reduction in the city's expenditures to maintain the park. The second thing is, the foundation is going to be in a much better position to market those things out there, to increase revenue. Marketing for events like this is not a core skill for the city to have, and so, we can, they can bring in marketing specialists who will get full value from that tremendous asset we have downtown. So, I think the long-term, if we think long-term, and that's maybe three or four years out, we ought to see a substantial reduction in the cost to the city to have that facility available to us.
I think one of the advantages that we saw was that the foundation would have a more singular focus on marketing and programming, providing for the programming of the park than maybe the Parks Department is able to do from time to time. So, and they have kind of the incentive to make that happen. So, there's a lot of other examples of botanical parks and gardens across the country that are managed in a similar way, and we felt that it was a good model to try to implement here in Oklahoma City.
Councilman McAtee?
Yeah, a comment with a question and another question, Kathy. This partnership, I'm going to call it a partnership, with the Myriad Gardens, this is a similar approach to what we're talking about to manage the Corda Shore Park when it comes on, with that fancy word that I can't pronounce, conserva?
Conservancy, yes.
Okay, this is the same general, and that's also the same model that we're talking about with our wellness centers when they come online, to get a partner to operate them and do the operating expenses. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and then on your numbers, if this was not passed, okay, and we didn't go into this, the amount of money that the city would have to come up with next year would not be $2.7 million, would it not be 3.5 to 3.6 million to operate it?
Actually, I believe the number would be right over $3 million at this point in time, because we want to make sure we don't double count the management fee or we double count the potential revenue side of things, but it would be $350,000, I believe, over what we're proposing in this year's budget.
And this is a step, this is the first step, and for this first year, you will not see any appreciable savings to the city, if you will, but over the length of the contract, we're hoping to get that amount of money that we're funding, our part of it, down as the foundation comes over and does the thing that Pat was talking about earlier, promoting, et cetera.
Right, our goal is to get the city's contribution down to a third of what the operating costs of the park are. So, if the operating costs are $3.6 million or $3.2 million, we want it to be, you know, $1.1 million around there. So, yeah, we're trying to get the city's contribution towards the maintenance and operations down over time.
Manager?
Mr. Vice Mayor, if I could step back just for a minute of time. We knew that we had some issues with the Myriad Gardens well before the Devon building, the Devon TIF came into place. In the '07 bond issue, we put in, I don't remember the right number, about $10 million for-
About $13 million.
About $13 million in there, most of which went for the glazing improvements that were in there. That was having operational effects to the gardens, and the glazing was 25 years old, plus more than that, closer to 30 years old, I would guess, probably, and had some issues, and the gardens needed some work. Subsequent to that, '07, Devon comes through, they announce they're building their headquarters here, there's a TIF that's generated, and additional dollars are put into the gardens. The gardens have been a wonderful asset over the years, but we all know that there's been some issues, access and visibility and those type of things. With the Devon TIF, we were able to address those issues, not with city dollars but with TIF dollars, which are ultimately tax care dollars, but TIF dollars to address that, and tens of millions of dollars more went into that project to make the improvements, which most of you've seen recently with the Arts Festival. As we generated this issue, this became apparent with the Devon TIF, we began having some discussions with the foundation, with others. Gosh, we're going to have this huge, new, neat facility, how are we going to operate that and minimize the impact on the general fund? So, over the last couple of years, we've been in discussions with the gardens to come up with this model. And I want to be real clear on this, our historic, we've been spending about $1,006,000 of net revenue for the operations of the facilities. The budget's been larger than that because it's been offset by some revenue, from admissions, gift shop, rentals down there, but the net cost to the general fund has been about $1,006,000. As we go forward, what we're trying to do is get to that one-third, one-third, one-third aspect that Kathy has talked about. Now, we're not there yet in this first year because the foundation's not up and running, because all of the revenue generating pieces of the garden are not in place, whether that's the restaurant, whether that's the ice skating rink, whether that's being able to run out the van shell and other aspects that are out there. And that's the goal as we go forward. We really look at this as an opportunity, as we go forward, to keep the general fund operations less to or equal to, I mean, our goal was actually to have it about equal to where we were prior to the improvements going forward, and we've been able to work with them and hopefully to come up with a model to achieve this. The other questions I've heard recently is, gosh, those gardens are great, so do we really need the Central Park? On the other side of that with MAPS 3, I've heard that from several, you know, are we having too much park downtown, or is there too much focus in downtown? We've always, you know, that discussion goes on quite often. As we go forward, we have not programmed the park for the MAPS 3. We had a report that was done by Hargraves, just following the MAPS, the Corda Shore program several years ago, that came up with some costs and some concepts that was used for the generation of the project that was put into, ultimately put into MAPS 3. Now, as we go forward, we're going to be hiring a consultant, and now we have new information. Our new information is that we have the Myriad Gardens that's up and running, and we know what that's going to be programmed at, and look like. When the Hargraves report was done, we really didn't at that point in time. So, based upon this new information now of what we have, and hopefully maybe even some operational data and attendance and new information from the operation of the Myriad Gardens, that will give us an opportunity when we program the Corda Shore Park to decide what type of activities we need down there. Corda Shore Park, MAPS 3 Park, Central Park, whatever you want to call it, as to what type of activities we're going to have down there. And maybe there's enough urban activity, and maybe we'll put some urban activities on the north edge and put athletic fields on the south edge and make it less programmed. Maybe it's something that we can program more out in the future. We have a lot of decisions yet to be made on MAPS 3 as to what that park's going to look like. And as a concern, just like we did with the MAPS 3 back then, talking about how the cost would be to operate this as we go forward, we'll take those same operational costs as we go forward into the discussions with MAPS 3 and how we're going to pay for things. You know, we went through each project when we put MAPS 3 together as to what was going to pay for itself and what wasn't. You know, we talked about, you know, the operations for the wellness centers, and the council's been very, very good about stating forward that we're not looking for impacts on the general fund on the wellness centers. We know there's not much impact on the sidewalks and the trails, and we went through each of those projects. The fairgrounds is going to pick up the operations on the fair improvements, and the river foundation, we anticipate, will pick up the improvements on the river improvements. As we go through there, the two things that were questioned as operations was the park and how we're going to fund that, and the answer is, we don't know yet because we don't know exactly how that's going to be programmed, and the transit. And we know with the modern streetcar, there's going to have to be some additional dollars put into transit, because no, transit operations pays for itself on revenues, and our modern streetcar won't be any different from that. I'm getting off base a little bit, but I did think it's important to put some of the bases, so the background information, as we go forward. There are decisions yet to be made as we go forward on the programming of the new MAPS 3 Park, and as we do that, one of the considerations will be the operational costs. So, I'm sorry, I digress for a second, but.
Councilman White? Councilman White? Mr. White?
Go ahead.
You deferring to Mr. Shadid?
I am.
I want to address those issues because I think that there are profound implications for the Corda Shore Park and for MAPS 3. I think that before we do that, there is a larger umbrella issue that needs to be addressed today, and that is the way that these substantial, long-term contracts are being presented to the council for consideration. This, my understanding is that these negotiations have been ongoing for many months, that council was not involved in those negotiations. A 42-page contract was negotiated and produced that was presented with some pressure on the city manager, I think, last week, that this had to get on today's docket. Things were done somewhat presumptuous, I think, in a nationwide search for an executive director, and five finalists are coming here in a couple of weeks for interviews, again, presuming that the council's going to sign off on this. And so, there's this urgency, the budget is coming up. I asked for what I needed and tried to set some boundaries with the Alliance for Economic Development discussion a couple of weeks ago, and I understand that there are some differences, certainly, between- differences certainly between the two nonprofits. But what I asked for then was, I cannot process a 36-page contract with all the enormous implications, getting that on Friday night, and then voting on it on Tuesday. I did everything I could to ask for that and make that clear what I needed. So here, two, three weeks later, we have the exact same situation, a 42-page contract, a 25-year agreement with profound implications for MAPS III and for the Cordishore Park that need more than 72 hours to be processed. And so I think what has to happen is, this needs to be formalized. We have some of the same players in the two events, Jim Tolbert and Larry Nichols are on the board of both, Kathy O'Connor was involved in the negotiations for both, Wiley did the 36-page contract for the Alliance and did the 42-page contract here. So beyond the personalities that are, I think it needs to be institutionalized and formalized. I think we need a resolution from the council that says, if city staff is negotiating to give city funds or function to a nonprofit, that the council be notified in writing that that is ongoing and to be given periodic updates. And the second that that contract is agreed upon, that it be provided to council, and then it not come up before council for a minimum of, I mean, we could talk about the amount of time, but for some significant period of time. So that this ends the process of seeing these things on Friday night, having coffee with one individual, and then being expected to vote on it on Tuesday. But that, to me, is no way to run a government or a business or anything with the profound implications that are at stake. So I've asked Kenny to begin work on that resolution. Now, if the council doesn't want to, doesn't agree, then that's a different issue. But I think that they, I suspect that that would pass, and then we can avoid these problems of last-minute, enormous contracts with enormous implications, and then asking for continuances and having resentment about us even asking for continuances, we can put that behind us. So I look forward to seeing that resolution and then having a vote on that before council. Now, in terms of the Myriad Gardens Foundation, which is a 25-year contract, which is going to, we don't know what kind of revenue it's going to generate. It has profound implications for the Cordishore Park. It seems to me that it will be in direct competition with the Cordishore Park on some of the presumptive revenue generators, like an ice skating rink or restaurants or, this is a, this is an entity which is going to have tremendous firepower in terms of the financial backers. My understanding is that the 12 members of the board will all be asked to give, what would they be asked to give?
Well, there will be some members of the board that are like me, that won't be there because of prior position, but new members of the board that we recruit to financially support the gardens will be asked to maybe making multi-year commitments of more than $20,000.
So each board member more than $20,000. The numbers I've heard is to try and build up the endowment to, in the realm of about $10 million. So this is going to be a powerful entity that we will have no control, there'll be no coordination between the public's running of the Cordishore Park and the Myriad Gardens. Do we have two ice skating rinks? Do they compete against each other? Do we have the public competing against an endowment with $10 million? And so the question, and I know that it hasn't been programmed, but the question, you know, after one week, and Jim alluded to this, after one week at the Festival of the Arts, you know, the Myriad Gardens is many people's favorite park, it's a wonderful urban park, but it now, what we need to address is whether the Cordishore Park is going to be viable. I want to see this Larkin study that apparently nobody has seen, but talks about maintenance costs of the Cordishore Park, which are going to be substantial, $5 million or other similar numbers. So how, you know, whether the Cordishore Park is even viable after we turn over the Myriad Gardens to a private foundation, I think needs to be publicly vetted, certainly privately vetted, and addressed. Would you have a comment on that?
I have a couple of comments. One is that on your remark about your emphasis on the 25 years, it is a 25-year contract. That's designed to build a long-term partnership. The agreement is subject to annual budget review with the council. The city's contribution is negotiated with the gardens. If the city should be unable or unwilling to fund, then I promise you, the foundation will give the gardens back to the city because the foundation will not want to maintain the gardens in an unacceptable level. More importantly, the city has the right under this agreement to cancel this contract with one year's notice. The city manager has complete access to all the information regarding the operation and maintenance of the garden. All the financial information is fully accessible to city and city staff. There will be an annual audit of the Myriad Gardens Foundation, which will be provided to the city, and I presume to you all if you want to be. So there's complete openness and transparency in this relationship. The city retains enormous power over the ongoing operation of the gardens. This is not being given over to a private entity. On the other hand, what you're trying to do here with the gardens, and frankly, I don't think I want to be party to a discussion of competing the gardens with Central Park South. I think that's the council's issues and the city's issue. My issue is how we go forward with the gardens. What the Myriad Gardens Foundation can bring to this, as has been mentioned, is a focus on marketing, which I think is going to be terribly important. You'll notice in the first year of this financial proposal, the foundation is agreeing to make certain commitments to raise certain amounts of money to offset costs, frankly, that we're going to, and pull the pose on the operation, the staff that we may add directly. But in addition to that, the foundation is in effect taking the risk on the estimate of earned income. If the earned income is not there, the city has no responsibility or no commitment to come up with the difference. Most likely, the foundation will have to figure out how to come up with the difference. So as years goes on, the marketing risk of developing earned income is going to be on the burden on the foundation. That's the benefit to the city. The most important benefit to the city is the ability to access private funds in support of this project, not just corporate funds from downtown Oklahoma City, but a broader, deeper membership from out the public throughout the city. The membership program at the zoo, for example, is a very significant and successful income source. The similar program for the gardens has been in existence for years, but it has been rather minor. With the new gardens, we have an opportunity to develop a big membership program, and I think the foundation can do an exceptional job of that. And finally, you mentioned the endowment. The endowment is designed to provide potential long-term revenue for the maintenance and operation of the gardens so the city won't have to come up with that money. This is a unique opportunity to create an endowment through a private, not-for-profit organization that has a track record and has an acceptance in the community at a time when the community will have the most interest in the gardens. I think that's a tremendous benefit to everybody concerned. The idea of it being competitive with the Cordishore, I do think that it's true that our experience, as the city manager said, will be of great benefit in determining how Cordishore is operated, the Central Park is operated, or what goes on in it. I think you will retain all the control that you have had in the past about the nature of that operation. I think we're nothing but a benefit to that. On the separate issue of the procedures of how the council operates in relationship with city staff, I don't think that is an issue that I should address.
I have two questions. One, will there be any council members on the board? I mean, you've indicated that we'll have great control over-
All right, there's several aspects of that. There is a provision in this agreement that provides for a process for creating an annual budget. The budget is then developed by a four-member committee made up of two representatives from the Myriad Gardens Foundation, a person appointed by the mayor, and a portion appointed by the manager. That budget is then presented to the council based on the joint effort of the two entities. There's no reason, I should think, or I think it's a very desirable outcome, that the mayor would appoint a member of the city council to that committee, so there would be an integral involvement on the part of the council in that operation. Beyond that, historically, the Myriad Gardens Foundation has regularly had members of the council on its board, and I see no reason now why that shouldn't continue. As it happens, right now, we don't, but not as a requirement, but if you'd like it to be a requirement, that's fine with me. We can modify or abolish that purpose. But I think as a matter of policy, I think it's a very desirable thing for the council to be represented on the board of the gardens.
The operative presumption to date is that for the Cordishore Park to succeed, it's going to require a foundation with substantial private endowment and support. Do you believe that, because I don't believe you can just take them in isolation, they're two substantial parks, they inevitably will have a tremendous impact on each other. And so that's, I would ask, do you believe that the Cordishore Park, with the Myriad Gardens Foundation operating as you've envisioned, that the Cordishore Park would receive substantial private funds or support?
I think what happens to the Cordishore Park in terms of the potential private support depends on what goes on around the Cordishore Park. How the area adjacent to the park develops is going to determine what private interest there is in the ongoing support of that park. Private investment in operations like the Myriad Gardens or operations like the Central Park, I think, are driven to a certain extent by self-interest. We're trying to capitalize on the fact that downtown business and major corporate interests in Oklahoma City want the Myriad Gardens to be a success and to be maintained and operated at a very high level. If we can create the same climate around the Central Park, I think you can develop the same kind of financing mechanism. But I think that's dependent on the interest that can be developed in that park. I don't think we're competing in terms of the private resources. Most likely, the ultimate private support for the area around the Central Park is going to be from developers who are developing property in that area, just as it will be the case here downtown, it's downtown property owners that are going to be the most immediately interested in the Myriad Gardens.
Councilman White.
Just a couple of comments. I personally would like to see the requirement that one of the appointees by the mayor and the manager, probably the one by the mayor, be changed to be a councilman.
Councilman White, I would have no problem deferring my appointment to the mayor and having two appointments who could both be councilpeople.
Wow.
If that helps.
Actually, I don't, I thought about that, but I think that one could be a councilman, the other needs to be somebody that understands how this system works.
Yeah, I think-
And we obviously don't, as you can see by the comments today. I'd like to see one of them be a staff member, somebody that knows, and then the other one be a councilman.
Well, I don't have a problem with two policymakers being councilmen being provided-
No, I understand, I understand, but I'm satisfied with one councilman. I wouldn't, I think if Skip and I gone on there, we'd have problems trying to figure out the budget, so I think we need to, I think we need to get some budget, good budget staffer to be one of those people. I'd also like for you to include on the foundation, you know, in the past, you and I, our relationship was based on the Myriad Gardens.
That's right.
The wars that went on in the middle 80s to bulldoze it, in effect, were some of the comments me and made. And so, but at that time, Jackie Carey was a council member and also a member of the Myriad Gardens Foundation. And Jackie Carey kept all of us advised as what was going on. We all knew what was going on. She was somebody that all of us trusted, and not everybody liked her, but all of us trusted her. And so she was, and that was an invaluable asset to me as a councilman, to be able to look across the horseshoe and ask Jackie a question about what's going on, and she could answer it right there publicly. And so I think that's a good idea also. I do think, Jim, that you minimize a little bit, and I understand why, but I do think it's the impact of this on the park, on the Central Park, and on MAPS III. I don't think this is a shot across the bow of the Central Park. I think this is a coup de grace for the Central Park. I just don't see how, within any reasonable time, the Central Park, as it was envisioned when it was pitched to us, about the third, third, and the third thing, I don't see how you take this, and I'm not objecting to that, frankly, because I always thought it was a bit of a pie in the sky. But I think this is the coup de grace for the Central Park for people of my age. It just can't, I just don't see how it can possibly happen. And I think that's a policy decision that bleeds over into what we're going to do about MAPS III. All this, and I'm diverting a little bit, but I think this is part of it. If the Central Park is not going to be feasible in a short period of time, and this would be one of the reasons why it's not, I think any idea that the Central Park has to be completed by 2014 is down the tubes. So the argument that we hear, we keep hearing coming back about what to do about prioritizing the MAPS III projects, it seems to me you could change that somewhat, move a landscaping project along the, both sides of the new boulevard forward, land acquisition could stay forward, some kind of a path to the bridge to prevent it from being isolated, and then move the rest of it to the rear, which would satisfy those that want to move the convention center forward slightly. I know it wouldn't solve all the problems, but it would solve some of those. But those are the kind of policy decisions that are going to flow from what we're doing today.
And, you know, I think that the foundation concept could be a real positive for the ultimate development and operation of Central Park. If this model is successful here, and I think it's going to be successful here because of the commitment of the people who are involved with it, it could provide a model for people participating in Central Park because they realize that there is a public-private partnership relationship that makes sense and that is a positive in the management of large park facility. And so I think it could be very much a positive, rather than a coup de grace, I think it's a positive move. It could be a positive move depending on the success of the Myriad Gardens Foundation operation of this park.
Well, I think that's, I don't disagree that's possible.
And I think we can have a lot of discussion about MAPS III, but I think we need to be careful that we don't have every discussion at this horseshoe that has some potential impact on MAPS III being a detriment to us moving forward in some of these areas.
Well, I'm not saying we don't move forward, but I mean, I think it's very optimistic to think that MAPS III, I mean, that we're going to be able to fulfill what is alleged to be a promise that we complete the Central Park by 2014. I saw that in the paper the other day, that one of our staff people was saying that was his direction from this council.
But I think that's an interesting comment in the paper, but I don't think it was based on fact, because I don't think this council has ever directed a schedule. We raised some questions-
Well, I agree with that.
...for a schedule, but I don't think we suggested, we suggested some thought be given to changing the order of the project.
I agree with that. I think that puts to rest whether that was an accurate statement of the council's intent or not if we approve this today. That's my point. And I do think, I mean, I'm not, I do think the model is a great idea. I love that idea. But I think it's a long time coming. When you think about how long it's going to take to raise the kind of money, to make the Myriad Gardens work like we want it to work, I think that's a long time coming to say that we'll see the Central Park develop as envisioned when we're running all the television commercials. I think that's unlikely. And I think it's easy, I don't think there's anything wrong with saying that. I mean, there's, why, that's the truth. I mean, why are we going to back away from saying it? I think, but that's an implication of what we're doing today.
I just want to clarify, because I didn't hear from, I mean, Jim, what I heard Jim say is that the amount of private, I mean, you're talking about this foundation being a model for the Cordishore Park, and I hear Jim saying, the amount of support is going to correlate tightly with the development around the Cordishore Park, which the ULI study and others have indicated is a 50-year process. So in terms of timeline, in terms of having the park done by 2014 and maintenance costs, I think it's fair to say that development around the park- I think it's fair to say that development around the park is not going to be there.
Well, which I think you're probably right, but I don't think it's material to what we're talking about this morning. My comment, Ed, was the fact that if this model is successful, that model could be used in the Central Park as well. And I had no, no thought of suggesting that we had to do this immediately, because as the city manager pointed out, we've not programmed what activities are going to take place in the Central Park area. And until we do that, we don't know what kind of requirements it's going to have for maintenance or operation. And until we do that, know that, we're not going to know what kind of support we need from the public sector, the private sector, I'm sorry.
Have a comment from Councilman Morris?
I just feel compelled to comment a little bit on a concern I have about where we're headed with these last few weeks of conversations. Agreements, let me back up. The Myriad Gardens Foundation has been around for a long time. And as far as I know, I haven't heard a name yet that's going to be on the, what could be the executive committee or the, or the foundation itself, that hasn't been involved in the Myriad Gardens all along. So these people are not new to the Myriad Gardens Foundation, and they're not new to wanting to help the Myriad Gardens. We preach time and time again how we want help here in Oklahoma City from people that are willing to come forward and help us build this city, whether it be private dollars coming forward, or people coming forward to help serve on boards and foundations and trusts, so that they, we can continue what we're doing here. This type of agreement that we, that we're talking about today is not unheard of in Oklahoma City. We welcome and applaud and support numerous things. The Zoo Society helps at the zoo. The Boathouse Foundation helps at the river. The Civic Center Foundation has been around for a long time and has basically the same kind of agreement at the Civic Center. So these kind of agreements, where we applaud and encourage people to come forward and help the city, we ought to be applauding these people, not getting on to them. I mean, it's almost like we're trying to slap down people who are trying to help us improve and progress through the city. As Jim said, this still is going to retain, as all the others I just named, will still be city property. And you have the ability, at some point, if you don't like what they're doing over there, to get out of that and start managing it yourself. But for some group to come forward and say, we're willing to commit to raising large amounts of money to help us maintain the Myriad Gardens, so that it doesn't get in the shape that it was in, I just, I'm a little concerned that we're throwing water on people that are coming forward trying to help us move forward. And that concerns me a lot, because if we're, if we're picking on this because of some personalities, that really concerns me, because there's other organizations that we have done these kind of agreements with, and we always encourage them, and we applaud them, and we thank them in the other areas, as I mentioned, the zoo and the civic center and the boathouse. I'm sure there's others that I can't bring off the top of my head, but it just concerns me that we're, if you have some procedural or structural issues you want to talk about, that's fine, and I don't think anybody has a problem doing that, but to thank, to dampen the energy that we've got going on because we want to pick on certain things that go on, really concerns me. And that's, that's a personal comment from me.
Councilman McAtee?
Just the thought that this is something new, and there's a rush, rush, rush before, this has been going on, we have, you briefed us on this, Jim, all along through your council papers and in interaction with us. Is there not some sense of urgency in that we're getting ready for a new budget year? We're going to need money to operate this park for next fiscal year. If we're going to go with this kind of an arrangement, we want to get the players in place as soon as possible to get as much momentum going from the opening as we can. So I think it's a, it's a business-oriented sense of urgency, if you will, and not some other kind of urgency that's going on here. And I think we're doing ourselves a disservice not to move forward as expeditiously as the council wants to put this together, because again, this is not in competition with the Central Park. This is just another step forward in the ultimate, whenever the Central Park is in and programmed, how the model works and who comes on board. So as one other side, the Economic Development Trust will still be involved in this, will not, Jim?
That's correct.
In this contract, which Councilman Ryan is the chairman of. And also, you were talking about other entities, Gary. There is an endowment that the Riverfront Authority has put together that also has raised money in a similar manner to this to support activities along the river. And that's been very, very successful, along with the Boathouse Foundation. So these, these type of private-public partnerships, if you will, are not new, and all we're doing is asking or approving a group of people who want to come along and manage a very valuable resource for us under our control. And I think it's a good deal.
It's a group of people who have been involved in that operation, that resource, for a long, long time. It's not like we're having a brand-new entity come in here and ask for something. These people have been involved, committed to this project, excuse me, to this project for a long, long time. And I agree wholeheartedly with what Larry and Gary have said. The success of MAPS, from its very, very beginning, was a unique ability to put together public and private partnerships. And the city and its citizens have benefited immeasurably from that kind of, those kind of partnerships. I think they're important, we need to.
Mr. Manager?
Can I address a timing issue on this, just for a second? There have been some briefings with council over, over the last, I don't know, seven, eight months. Mr. Shid, I apologize, those were before you were on council. Unfortunately, you weren't part of those briefings, so I apologize. I truly understand your frustration on getting an agreement on a Friday afternoon and being asked to vote on that the following Tuesday. I share in your concerns. We need to do a better job of getting that out quicker. I, you know, it's been, it's been in the process for several months. I was a little uncomfortable how quickly it came down last week. And I do apologize to you for bringing this so quickly to council without having you properly briefed on the issues that go forward. I will pledge to you not to do that again, as we go forward. And in response to Mr. McAtee, on the timing thereof, you know, there's, has there been a motion? There's been at least some discussion on deferring this. I don't know where we're at on, I'm at, you know, it isn't the end of the world that this was deferred for two weeks. Mr. Talbot won't be here in two weeks to be in discussions at that point in time, so that's a consideration that's out. He won't be there here next week either, so that's just a consideration as we go forward. It would be best to have an agreement in place prior to the beginning of the fiscal year. There are some arguments to make sooner than later. But I understand, Mr. Shid, very clearly, your concerns in regard to that.
Well, I want to, Mr. Shid. I want to make clear, it's not about, even though it is the same personalities involved, it's not about personalities. It is procedural, and it's not just me. I don't think Pete had any idea. I don't think anybody saw the 42-page contract before Friday night. We had the alliance contract, which was presented 36 pages, and what came out of it two weeks later? The auditor didn't have a chance to go over that, and he saw things he didn't like, and he asked for an amendment? There were multiple, multiple amendments to the alliance contract that just came from us all having two weeks to fully vet it and everybody, you know, opine about, about what needed to be added. The agreement that came out two weeks later was very different than the 36-page contract presented on that Friday night. And so, everything that Gary's saying may very well be true. This may be a wonderful agreement. I just can't, in 72 hours, ascertain whether that's, I mean, to go through 42 pages, even if you've had notification that this is ongoing, to read all the legal language and all the implications, whether there's a council member on board? What are the implications for the public in terms of who gets to have events at the park and who doesn't? What are the implications of switching from city government to a nonprofit? And what are the legal implications of a nonprofit running the park? There are lots of things that need to be figured out over the next two weeks. So it is procedural, it's not personal.
Any other comments?
I just have one. Mr. Talbot, thank you for your very eloquent, you know, statements that you've made in support of this. And we understand that you're going to be gone, but I think your message has been clear and well-received. What is the ultimate vision as you all have looked at this project as far as the Myriad Gardens? I mean, the 180 project has, and the TIF funds in reference to the remodel and the establishment of it as it is today, and although we know it's not complete, but there is no more land, I don't think, that will be to go to the south in reference to the geographics of the park. So with that stated, in your opinion, what is some of the grand visions that you all see for the park?
I think the grand vision is very simple. The grand vision is to have maximum use of it by the citizens of Oklahoma City, and to have the most productive activity going on in the gardens, and educational activities going on in connection with its botanical efforts that provide the most service to the community. And it's not going to grow physically. Probably, it will not change radically in terms of its internal layout over the next 25 years. But I think as time goes on, it will become the Central Park of Oklahoma City and viewed as a central park. Sorry about the use of the terms, but it will be the place that people think of as the center of the city. And the high level of activities that will be occurring in it, the nature of those activities, I think, will increase every year. There will be some things that we find that we propose to do now that probably don't work out, that they're probably not in the interest, long-term interest of the community, and we'll change them. We'll be flexible about that. But it will not be physically growing, it will not grow physically. The second most important thing that will happen, I hope, over 25 years, is it will be beautifully maintained. Something as complex and intentionally developed as this requires a very high level of maintenance and a high level of attention and love, frankly, from its staff in order to remain the pearl that it is now. And I think the Myriad Gardens Foundation takes that responsibility very close, that we feel very strongly that responsibility. And that, plus providing the funds to assure its maintenance and operation, providing the marketing and the management that assure that the facilities are used to the maximum in the best and most constructive way, is what I hope we can accomplish over the next 25 years.
I have one final question, Jim. Could you envision any way in which the Myriad Gardens Foundation would become involved with the Cordishore Park as well?
And it's, it's hard to say any, under any circumstances, ever. I think intentionally, right now, we're focused on making this a success. We, on the other hand, are a partner with the city in this, and if 10 years down the road, there was a role that we could play that would be constructive, that would not take away with the role we're playing at the Myriad Gardens, I'm sure we would enter into that discussion. But right now, I can't imagine what that is.
Any other comments?
Any other questions?
We have some, some issues that I think that has been brought to the attention of all of us, Mr. Talbot. And I think that in reference to the fairness and giving an opportunity to address some particulars as it relates to the placement of individuals on the board, I would like to see if we could defer this for two weeks. Is it, can we do it for two weeks?
We can. Mr. Talbot will not be available in two weeks.
I will make sure, if that's the case, that we're represented by someone else, the foundation representative.
As that stated, Mr. Talbot has made a very eloquent statement, and I think it's been well-received by the council, and I don't think we'll forget that in two weeks.
I hope not.
Thank you very much.
Skip, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
I mean, one problem is that the mayor's not, a third of the council isn't here today. Meg Salier, whose ward this resides in, isn't here. The mayor's not here, Mr. Gray. In two weeks, which members of the council will not be here?
Francis, do you?
I believe everyone will be there. I'll check my camera. Your Honor, let's just ask.
Yes, Mr. McAtee.
Just to join the question.
Sure.
If we wanted to, could we not, right now, put in there, in this existing contract today, the fact that a council member or two have to be on this committee and/or have to be on the Board of Trustees?
You could put it in the contract that one or two council members would have to be on the committee, that they obviously would have to go back and agree to that. And also, with changing the composition of the foundation, that's going to be an amendment to the Articles of Incorporation, so the Board of Directors would have to.
It would have to be approved by our.
Would have to be approved.
So to do that, to do that procedure, would not be really the best interest?
Not really. In effect, if you put it into the contract, you would really be offering a different contract back to them, and they would have.
What I would prefer is, and I think I can tell you, that I will use my best efforts to make sure that there is a council member selected to go on the board of the foundation. My best efforts with the foundation have been reasonably successful, and I will do my best to make sure that happens. And I would hope that it is, that that has been acquiesced to by the time you meet for further consideration of this.
If we don't, we just don't fund them, and that's all.
That's right.
We have the ultimate, we have the ultimate responsibility, ultimate authority here, by two ways. One, we can exercise the option of the contract to cancel it. And secondly, we can just refuse to fund it, and then they will pick up their tent and leave. And so, we have to remember that, regardless of what the contract says in terms of who's going to be on these various committees and boards, the city council has the ultimate responsibility and authority to manage this contract.
Councilman Shid, in reference to your question about the two weeks' deferral, or if there's deferred, how many council members will be here? And I've been advised by the clerk that everyone should be here on the 31st, that we should have a full council.
Do you have a motion to defer? Is that U.N.? You have a motion to defer? No. You're deferring S and T. Yes.
There's a motion to defer S and T as it relates to this project, Mr. Talbot, for two weeks to the 31st.
The 31st.
Yes. Is there a second?
I might say that Leslie Bastler is here, who has been representing us in this, and if any councilman would like to have conversation with Leslie and her understanding of the meaning of the agreement, I'm sure she'd make herself a better. Thank you all very much.
Mr. Talbot, the motion passed four to two to defer this to May the 31st. And thank you so much for your time and your comment.
Kenny, didn't it take four affirmative?
Yes, four affirmative. Yes, it's just a majority of the quorum, so you have six members, it's four to defer.
Thank you.
At this time, we are going to modify one more issue on the, on the agenda. You will be moved to, after city managers' reports. An eighth resolution authorizes municipal council to contest judgment. Is that up?
Yes, we do not need an executive session on this. This was just an auto accident, and the city has clear liability.
Move the resolution.
Number two, do we need executive session in reference to, okay? Is it a motion on number two? Okay. Claims for denial?
No one's signed up.
There's no one signed up on this. Claims for denial, move for approval.
I trust we're for denial.
And no executive section on number two? Is it right?
Correct.
Okay. Claims recommended for approval, so I don't assume no one is complaining about that, right?
No one's signed up.
All right, move it. All right, move it. Number two, do we need executive session? Okay. Well, then that brings us to items from council. Councilman Mars. Councilman Shadid.
I'd just like to reference. Oh, no, sorry, just go back to that. Just flip through those real quick. I just want to publicly, the one that says Brookings Institute, I just want to publicly reference the Brookings Institute study that came out this week on transit. Oklahoma City ranked 84th out of 100th of municipalities in the country. I'm somewhat surprised that we did that well. Specific findings were the number of working age residents near a transit stop in Oklahoma City is 42%. The median wait time for rush hour of a transit vehicle is some 20 minutes. The share of jobs reachable via transit in 90 minutes was found to be 23%. I hope we can build on the results of this study and work. I thought some people were coming to speak maybe today on transit, but I guess not. I hope that we can take note of this study and start working towards a comprehensive reform of our transit system. Thank you.
Councilman White?
Just one comment about the resolution that Councilman Shadid asked for. Is that possible that would be on the agenda in two weeks?
Yes, we can draft that in the next couple, next week, get it on the agenda.
Councilman Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. I just want to make a comment. In our agenda today, we approved a number of issues that dealt with workplace injuries. And I was hopeful that that was just a coincidence and not an indication of a trend that our safety record or safety efforts were being any less effective than they had been in the past.
I think it's more of a function of not having two council meetings in a week, so they, we had a group of them that came in today.
Right. But I mean, that's happened before occasionally, but very seldom have we seen this many at one time. And I just, like I say, I was concerned that, I hope it didn't indicate that we have any way reduced our efforts to provide a safe workplace for our employees. And that's my only comment.
Well, usually, I get to say something since I'm the vice mayor. Do I lose my opportunity to?
No, sir.
Items from council?
No, you're good.
Well, then my items from council is congratulations to the Oklahoma City Thunder, to the whole Thunder organization for such a fantastic Sunday basketball game and placing us in the finals for the Western Conference, four or seven games away from playing for the national championship. Thank you.
And at this time, we'll have the city manager reports.
Couple, couple things. One is the April sales tax check that's in there. I won't comment on that. It was a strong month for us again, so we're blessed in what we're seeing in sales and use tax recently. I do have a couple of presentations that are scheduled today. One is a tax increment financing one that we put off a couple of times, and so I would suggest we probably put that off one more time as we go down the line. We'll just keep that on, and I know there will be a council meeting where we have time to get into that. And the other is a presentation on the Convention Visitors Bureau. And if the council would like to hear that, it's fine. If not, we could try to reschedule that. Mr. McAtee is shaking his head. So I will take that from Mr. McAtee as we will bring that back. And Mr. Ryan is agreeing with that. And so I will, I believe that I'm done with city manager reports, sir.
Okay. We have one other matter that, on citizens to be heard, and that will be Mr. Bill Murray, real estate specialist for the United States Postal Service.
Vice Mayor and city council members, guests, my name is Bill McMurray. I'm with the U.S. Postal Service. The postal service is wanting to announce that we're going to do a relocation of the Martin Luther King Post Office to the East Side Station, or that we're planning to do this proposal, and we're wanting to announce the plan. You may be aware that the postal service has been losing lots of money. The drop in mail volume is probably due to two causes. One is the internet, and the other one is the recession. The postal service is attempting to begin cutting staff and extending the length of carrier routes. We're doing everything we know of to try to stem the flow of red ink. We've also been optimizing our facilities. When we have two facilities in the same locale, one of them owned and one of them leased, we make every attempt to get the station moved to the one that's owned. That's basically what we are doing with the Martin Luther King relocation. We propose to relocate MLK from 24th to Kelly, just south of the medical center. The driving distance is 2.4 miles. As a part of the change, we will expand the parking at East Side and create a brand-new retail lobby. It should be a real upgrade for that area. I have the postmaster of Oklahoma City here if you have any questions operationally. If you would like to make a comment, written comment besides what we discussed today, my mailing address is William L. McMurray, Field Box 6671, Dallas, Texas, 752667180. If you wish to appeal the proposal, then you simply write the name of Vice President of Facilities at the top of that, and we will receive it as an appeal. I'm open to any questions that the council would like to put to me on this.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. That's a little disappointing to us. We have had a focus to get redevelopment on 23rd Street, and I know there's been some discussions, to get a new facility on 23rd Street and move that one down. It's been a priority of ours to do that, and we'll discuss whether or not we want to take an official protest on it or not. But that's, I think it's been a focus, to get some reinvestment on 23rd Street.
What's the proposed timing of this change, Mr. Mayor?
It depends on what the response is from the community. We will probably be doing this by the end of this year.
And is there a time limit on the opportunity to appeal this particular decision?
Yes, it needs to be coming in the next two weeks.
Okay, so any official comments the city might have?
I'm sorry. Let me back up, councilman. I made a misstatement. Right now, with the announcement, we're asking for comments for the next two weeks, 15 days. We then wait, we tell you, we write the council back, we then look at the comments that came in, and then we will report back via letter to the mayor's office what our decision has been on it.
If there are a significant number of negative comments, would that be impetus for you all to change your mind?
It's awfully difficult right now for the postal service to come up with a scenario where they're going to stay in a leased facility and lose the amount of money. We're talking like $8.5 billion last year. It's huge. We have to trim back every way we can in deference to the city manager's comments. I don't know of any new facilities we're building. The real estate, I do the real estate for the new space with the southwest area. We aren't doing any new facilities. It's a one-hand-clapping program. We are trying to trim the suit just as fast as we can to fit the man. We have reduced mail volume. Our mail volume is 20% of what it was, or, I'm sorry, it's dropped 20% from what it was five years ago. We still have carriers going to every house. That hasn't changed, and it won't change. But we need to pull back on all of the expenses that we've been presenting, we've been burdening ourselves with over the past few years and try to consolidate to the size of the postal service that we're actually coming up with.
Mr. McMurray?
McMurray, yes.
I have been involved in this conversation for quite some time. But unfortunately, the beginning of the conversation that I had as relates to the postal service in the northeast quadrant of Oklahoma City, in particular, the station at Martin Luther King, I believe it's 27th and Martin Luther King or 25th and Martin, 24th and Martin Luther King. The irony of this is, is that the postal office, the postal service came to me. I didn't go to them. They came to me as a way of trying to see what they could do and offer as a better service for the community, especially the African-American community off of, in the area that I represent. It's not all black, but the historical services as it relates to that postal service at 24th and Martin Luther King is deplorable. Citizens have said it. People from the post office have said it. That people are even fearful to go there sometime, and that they wanted to do something that would upgrade the level of service, the safety of citizens, and a bright spot in an area that was being considered for new development. And the area that they identified was northeast 23rd Street. And I took their word, and the conversations continued. We never had a signed agreement, but in the working relationship of professionals, and I know the government does what the government wants to do, but I'm telling you that I think that this is a sad state for these citizens to be affected negatively in reference to their ability to seek postal service needs, to have to drive from Wildwood all the way down to the medical complex to seek any type of services for the postal needs that they have. And what would happen if there wasn't two post offices, and one hasn't served the general public in 20 some odd years? And if you only had that one at 24th and Martin Luther King, and the conditions of it was to the point where it just could not service the needs and wasn't servicing the needs, then what would we do?
Are you asking me if we want to build a new facility on 23rd?
Yes, sir, because the question, the statements that was made to me at that time, two years ago, was that the post office wasn't building new post offices, and I understood that. And I understand that there has been a history of the post office leasing facilities on a long-term basis that's been built and constructed by private developers. Is that true?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So the fact that the post office is not building new facilities don't mean that a new facility could not be built to render the services for citizens in a particular area that's being deprived of postal needs. And that's my point.
Are you asking me to respond to that? We pay rent on those facilities when a private developer does it. The actual savings that come with this are primarily oriented to personnel costs. We actually are able to eliminate some positions, and it far exceeds the cost of the real estate. The savings in personnel costs are substantial when we end up trimming back a facility. They can be supervised by one person instead of a person in each locale. I don't know of any way of getting a new facility on 23rd Street to target your question with what I think you were asking me. We lost $8.5 billion last year.
I understand that, Mr. McMurray, but, you know, I think it's kind of unfair to make it sound like that that $8.5 million was part of this geographical area in reference to the postal service's losses. At some point in time, I think the postal service has a duty and an obligation to serve a geographical area of people.
We have a carrier that goes by every house every day.
Well.
They receive their mail.
Okay. But then why do you have post offices, then? If you want to justify that on the basis that you have carriers that goes to people's houses, then why do we have post offices?
We have post offices sell stamps.
They do more than just sell stamps. And I'm not going to get argumentative with you, but I just think that this needs to be looked at, and if the appeal process is real or is it just, just a process? If we're standing up here telling everyone in Oklahoma City that may be negatively affected by this change that they can appeal, is this going to be something that's going to be really considered by the postal office in reference to the decision that's ultimately made, or are we just going through a make-believe process?
We certainly have a process that we have to go through. We are obligated by Congress to go through. I don't know what the impact will be because I haven't seen what will transpire out of The alternative would probably not be a new facility on 23rd. The alternative would be to leave the current facility where it is.
Have you been to that facility?
Yes, sir. The bulletproof glass and the parking right on the street and, yes, sir.
Do you feel comfortable there?
No, sir, but it is a reasonable thing to ask residents of an urban area to drive two and a half miles. It's not, it's not a huge change. I think when we did the Village Post Office, I'm guessing that it's close to two miles It's a mile? It's a mile? Okay.
A mile, yeah. And so for citizens who, of age, limited mobility, limited transportation, does that go into any of the considerations in reference to the geographical area that you're affecting? And I think those are things that need to be considered. You know, we talk about walkability. Councilman Shadid makes a big point in reference to a study that was just reported about Oklahoma City's means of access by, you know, walking and trying to downsize this move of vehicular transportation. But in other words, you support it by saying that, you know, that's nothing unusual for, you know, the postal system and for individuals to have that type of distance in reference to seeking services.
Sure.
Good morning. My name's James Bryan. I'm the postmaster of Oklahoma City. And.
And Councilman...
Yes, James.
You know, we spoke before. This is an ongoing process that we're doing all across the country. It's a national process that where we are looking at every leased facility that we have across the entire United States. And we have looked at every leased facility in Oklahoma City, and we've already consolidated some of those facilities, as you're aware. We had, we moved Northwest Station into Center City Station. This past weekend, we moved the Dell City Carrier Unit over into Southeast Station, and there are other studies that are continuing to be done from a cost analysis and from a community impact position. And we are certainly aware of and very mindful of our presence at MLK and that surrounding neighborhood, and we take that very seriously. By the same token, as Mr. McMurray said, our company is in extreme financial straits. We lost eight and a half billion last year. We've already lost over $2 billion this year. And the, all the projections are, is the mail volume is going to continue to decline. So as a company that is not funded by any taxpayer assistance, we solely operate on the sales and service of postage, like any other private company has to operate on. So with that in mind, we have 32,000 retail facilities across the United States. Of those 32,000, 26,000 of them lose money. Now, we are required by law to provide a universal service, and that is what the post office is. That is one of our main cogs of what we do, and we take great pride and take that very seriously. And so in relocating MLK or considering to relocate MLK over to 7th and Kelly, we take that seriously as well. But we are simply a company that, right now, is having to review every nickel and dime that we spend to stay and provide service to the community that is expected. So we do take those things very seriously. We do want to provide great service to all citizens across Oklahoma City, and we've already had citizens that have already been impacted to some degree by some of the relocations that we've had to do. And so it has nothing to do with a geographical area. It has to do with leased facilities and where those leased facilities are. And many of our leased facilities have been around for 20, 30, 50 years or longer. And so five, 10 years ago, if someone would have the notion that we would be reducing leased facilities and moving those operations where it's possible into postal-owned facilities, you would probably got a funny look from most people's faces in the post office. But everyone knows how things are changing across the country in many different areas, and this is our world in the post office. So we have no choice but to adapt and do all that we can to continue to provide great service and continue to provide universal service. But at the same token, we have to do that because we're self-funded. We get no additional money from anywhere. And so those are our choices that we have to make, and we do take those choices very seriously. Thank you.
Comments? I would just like to leave with just one last note on that, and that is, think about, when was the last time the United States postal system in the northeast quadrant of Oklahoma City in this zip code area had done and have made any major improvements in reference to the facilities?
May I say one thing to that?
You can.
We did do that approximately 10 years ago. The postmaster at that time, George Fram, was very interested in creating a larger presence in the MLK area. And we actually increased our presence there from a operational standpoint by moving some of the operations out of Chertel Station and Zone 5 in particular, from a delivery area over into MLK operations. And we did that, a primary reason we did that was to provide a greater presence in that area. So again, we are very mindful of that, and we're doing all that we can.
Thank you. At this time, you will be considered, and I would ask Councilman White, would you... Is it Councilman Ryan? Did you correct it? So is it Councilman Ryan? He's the last one. Councilman Ryan, would you come forth, please? Due to the fact that I have been involved directly or indirectly in the last two matters, it's going to be on the docket, I'm going to excuse myself and recuse.
We're on to item, you on the agenda, and I think our Ms... Counselor has a comment to make on you?
Yes. The item we brought before the counsel today is a resolution that would appoint a special counsel for the limited purpose of reviewing criminal complaints and making filing decisions and performing the prosecutorial functions on behalf of the city in relation to the Tabernacle Baptist Church. There apparently is an ongoing controversy between at least two different factions of the church, and there have been a number of complaints of alleged criminal violations brought to the police department by both sides. Some of them have also come to the city prosecutor, and as we say in the council memo, she has filed one of them, declined two of them, and two are currently pending for review. We have some potential and are perceived conflicts of interest. It's why we're bringing this before you. A member of the church is a member of our office and supports one of the two sides, and then there's another potential conflict of interest. So that is why we have brought this to the council. We were meeting yesterday with Councilman Ryan about this and also with the chief of police, and Chief City suggested that he might go to the district attorney's office and see if the district attorney would be willing to review all criminal allegations that arose from the church. The district attorney was agreeable to that. So really, there are two options for the council to consider today. We could strike this item with the agreement of the district attorney to review any criminal allegations that come up at the church, or if counsel would prefer, you could go ahead and pass the resolution to appoint the special counsel.
Are there comments from a counsel? Excuse me, from the counsel directed to the city attorney, pro or con, as far as this is concerned? And remember now, we're considering the resolution. We're not getting into the details of the problems that may be or may not be out at the church. So the resolution deals with bringing on a special counsel to represent the city in this matter.
And the alternative would be to ask the district attorney's office to do it?
Yes, and actually, the chief has already had that conversation with the district attorney's office, and the district attorney is agreeable to committing an assistant district attorney who would review all criminal allegations arising from the situation at the church.
Is the chief available to talk about the role of the city, the police in this? Because as I understand it, the role of the police would not change. But I'd like to hear that from the chief of police if we can.
Yeah, that's correct. I mean, we'll still take the complaints and the reports. Our role will still remain the same. It'll just be, everything will be presented to the district attorney's office because everything would apply, whether it's an assault complaint, whether it's a disruption complaint, any type of criminal complaint. They could also oversee it, file it in state court if appropriate. So we would just be taking everything to state court where there does not appear to be any conflicts.
Thank you. Any questions to the police chief while he's here? About the procedure that the police will follow is exactly like it's been in the past. They will respond to every call as promptly as they can, investigate them, and then turn the results of their investigations to the district attorney, as I understand it.
Correct. They'd just be presented to the DA instead of the city attorney.
Councilman White?
Just so I'm clear, if we do the resolution and hire an outside counsel, they're going to determine whether we, as a city, want to initiate those charges, and then those charges would have to be taken to the district attorney anyway to be filed. Is that correct?
No, the city attorney just establishes and files city ordinances. So for instance, if we have an assault complaint, then most of the simple assault complaints go to our city courts in violation of our city ordinance. If we do this, then all assault complaints will not go to city court. They will go to state court and filed, if they're file-able, then we file the assault charge as a state misdemeanor. It'll still be a misdemeanor, just be a state misdemeanor versus the city.
But it would eliminate what you referred to as a potential conflict on both sides of it and put it into the DA's office.
Eliminates the city completely, except for the police. Our process would just be to take it to them.
And the police are just the law enforcement who investigate the allegations and make reports, and then submit those to the prosecutor for either a filing or a decline decision.
Councilman White?
I'd just like to ask a question. Are all the people that are here on the same side? So both sides are here? Does each of you have a, could each of you pick a representative to talk to us? And, I mean, to talk from that instead of talking to everybody? And so we could determine whether or not there's any agreement at all between the two of you to accept this kind of a solution? I think we are, I think we are without question conflicted. I don't think there's any question about that. I don't think we can help you without taking one of these two options. And so it'd be nice, at least, for both of you to, for one, a spokesman from each side, I think, to come forward and let us determine whether or not... It's my personal recommendation that we use the district attorney's office, but would that be agreeable to your side?
Absolutely. I think the district attorney office would be the ideal.
Sir, could we have your name and address for the record, please?
Pastor Harrison of Tabernacle Baptist Church.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. I think the district attorney would be the ideal undercoat for dealing with this issue because it takes everything out of play, which will cut out the time limit of things having to be shifted back to the district attorney.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Is there someone from the other side that could...
And again, sir, I will ask you to give us your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, sir. Members of the council and vice mayor, my name is Kwame Mamina. I'm an attorney representing the Board of Decents for Tabernacle Baptist Church and the majority membership of Tabernacle Baptist Church.
Excuse me, please, please. Please, please, if you'll just let him, let him go ahead, please, without interruption. I would appreciate that.
And we concur that the district attorney is a good idea. We were going to oppose the resolution as it was presented mainly because we think it's simply a waste of funds and that it makes sense.
But you do agree with us? You do agree with the idea that it go to the district attorney's office?
Yes, I think we are concurred with that.
Thank you very much for both of you. And please, if you'd all sit down, I want to appreciate your comments. And so essentially, we have a consent from the people who are represented to do exactly what we've asked to do, and that is to take it to the district attorney. Councilman White, does that answer your question? Okay, thank you. Are there any comments or anything else from the council?
How do we facilitate that? We just, we don't act on this resolution?
I think it would be appropriate for the council to strike the resolution and ask staff to take all cases to the district attorney.
Okay. Correct. Everybody up? That's okay with everybody?
The motion would be to strike this resolution and direct the city staff to take all complaints to the district attorney's office. If you come to the microphone, please, if you have a question? And give us your name and address for the record, please. And please keep it...
Barbara Davis. My address is 2700 Southeast 47th Street, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma, 73129.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. And you have a question, not a speech?
My question is, since there seems to be some interference with the city attorney office, are we going by that office?
Yes, ma'am. The effect of this, of not adopting this resolution would take the city completely out of the picture in terms of the administration of the claims or complaints after they have been filed.
Okay.
Pardon me. Comments or questions? You've had a chance. Thank you, Reverend Harrison, please. That's the only issue we had for you. Asked for your address, and we do appreciate your comments. Thank you very much, Reverend Harrison. If it's a question, not a speech. If I can, your name and address for the record, please.
Karen Harrison, 15309 Grayson Drive, Edmond, Oklahoma. How soon...
Actually, Oklahoma City, but it's all right.
Okay. How long, is this immediately? Will this occur?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So effective immediately if you approve it, it's in...
Yes, ma'am.
Operation. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to strike this item and direct staff to take it to the district attorney's office.
A motion made in second. Are there any other questions or discussions? Cast your votes. And the issue is, the issue's taken off. Okay, now, we have a lot of citizens who have, excuse me, please. We have a lot of citizens who've indicated they wanted to speak to the council, and I want to give them this opportunity right now if they feel that the issues have been addressed sufficiently to withdraw their names. They don't have to do anything, we'll just call their names. Let me rephrase that. We'll just ask people to speak right now who have other issues to bring before the council, and then if there's anybody else afterwards who would like to talk about this issue, we'll give them an opportunity to do that. Is there anybody else who would like to address the council on matters that do not relate to the Tabernacle Church issue or the striking of this resolution? Yes, sir. Would you come forward, please? And if you can give us your name and address for the record, please. And since we've asked these people to sit here for such a long time, if you could keep your remarks to about three minutes, we would appreciate that.
Yes, sir. My name is Howard Morris. I live in 1101, I mean, 1104 North Mockwell Avenue, Oklahoma City. And my deal is I have a couple of pieces of property that's located on northeast 28th Street, 809 and 813. I was doing some work on it, and all I'm asking is to grant an extension so that I can complete the job. I had some people on the job, and they were working. I was paying them by the day, and then they didn't perform what they said they were going to perform. So I had to dismiss them and try to find somebody else. And then I got another letter saying that they were going to go ahead and tear the property down. So I'm just asking for an extension so that I can bring it back up to code.
I would suggest that you give the city staff, people who are involved in that, and they can talk to you about an extension as long as you're making reasonable progress in doing what you're required to do. I don't think there'll be any problem at all.
Okay. They've already...
That gentleman right there...
Oh, okay.
...is the person to talk with.
If you could talk to him, sir, and I think he'll be able to comment on your question. Is there anybody else here who would like to address the council on an issue that doesn't relate to the Tabernacle?
Yes. Councilman Ryan Blair Humphrey. He's 1222 Northwest 20th Street. Just wanted to mention to you, I'm currently working as a fellow at the Institute for Quality Communities and was very interested in the Brookings Report and the impact that that has on our community, both from just an access standpoint but also from a health standpoint. There are people within the research community and then just interested citizens interested in doing research about our transit, how we might be able to make it more effective based both on our current resources but then also on potential future resources that we might decide to allocate resources to, funds to. One of the things that we need is just access to data. It doesn't necessarily always hope to have old data, but one of the thoughts is that they could do a live stream with new technology and internet. You have the ability to... they could do a live stream with new technology and internet, have the ability to make data available as it's produced through the GPS sensors on the buses and through other mechanisms and data collection. And so, if the council would be interested, we'd like to put together a proposal on how we might be able to do that with the lowest cost possible to the city, but just wanted to mention it while I was here. Appreciate the time.
Thank you very much for your time, Humphreys. Now, is there anybody else who would like to address the council? Now, I'll give the people who are here from the Tabernacle an opportunity if they would choose to, to address the council. Again, I would ask them to keep their comments to three minutes or less because of the late hour, and all the patience people have exhibited so far. I do appreciate your patience. I know those are hard chairs to sit in, but we had a lot to do this morning.
I want to thank you all for allowing us to be here today. What I want to focus on is the statute Title 21 as it relates, that seems to be the codeme around the different dissecting of this particular document that was entered when it comes to interrupting worship service. We want the law enforced, and we don't want to have any dissenting moments relating around what is in the language. It says every person. When it trickled down from the Chief of Police to us, they told us to post everything on the doors, and so, that minimized the activity. We have been people from the opposing side, seems to enjoy interrupting worship service, keeping kids from being baptized, and keeping youth from singing. They're bringing people from off the streets who's not even a part of the church, and yet, when we called, we can't get this enforced. And then we went back, and he said that he made a mistake, saying that it's pertaining to someone that comes in off the street. But the chairman of the trustee board, Trustee Jones, reminded the chief that it says every person, not people just walking off the streets. So, we want this to be enforced by the city. It's an embarrassment of this organism acting in this way, and we apologize to all of you and to the people in which you represent, because it's all around the community. We owe you a great apology, but we need some help and rectifying, and we hope that someone look at the etymology of these particular words and decipher them, because even the Constitution has constitutional historians who constantly look at things to decipher what's going on. So, we ask, and we want to apologize, because this is embarrassing to be in down here, because we are not an organization, we're an organism. We're supposed to be setting standards. We've got weird kids working with us. We've got outbreak, and they have created such an hostile environment for our kids, which have, will give them an opportunity to take on a different perspective of how church want to be. Help us to revisit that. This is not the first time. The Nausen Creed, the Chastenown Creed, all these creeds that come up, there's been church fight. But when you start talking about ecclesiology, which is the church, or ecclesiastical, which is the organism within the church, it's the structure. But at the end of the day, whether you're ecclesiastical or organization, no one is above the law, and we ask that you will help us enforce the law to keep these people from interrupting our worship services on Sunday morning. Thank you.
Are there anybody else who would like to? And remember now, this is not a debate.
I understand.
This is just an opportunity to inform the council of your viewpoints, and if you would keep your remarks to three minutes, please, I would appreciate it, sir.
I appreciate that, Vice Mayor. I simply wanted to make note that this is a matter not for the council. This is a matter within the church. There is a separation of church that this council and every government must respect. There are differences among the parties. I represent a group of people who historically run that church, and that's what they've been doing, and it has nothing to do with disrupting services. The police department has done an excellent job. I applaud what they've done. They've enforced the law equally. They have not enforced the law in a prejudicial fashion against anybody, and I hope they continue to do that. The police department of Oklahoma City is not there to take sides. They are there to enforce the law, and that's exactly what they've done. This resolution was spearheaded by a misguided conception of some type of a conflict that really was concocted, and that's why we initially opposed it. I understand that there is a perceived conflict, but that perception is also misguided. And I only want the council to know that my members and the Board of Deacons in no way have disrupted any services of the church and never will, and that our effort has only been to do what the majority of those members want to do, and they have the absolute right to choose their pastor and to choose the operation of the church, and that's what they have done, and that's what they will continue to do. That's it. There's nothing else to be said. The majority shall rule, and that's indeed what's happened. That's what's been enforced. There's been a vote of the members of the church, and they voted to take action, and that's all they've done. And I want the council to be clear of that.
You may have your name and address for the record, please. And just a reminder, this is not a debate.
Okay.
It's an opportunity to inform the council. Three minutes.
Okay. You must know I was a preacher, so you gave me that three minutes right away.
If I told my preacher that, he'd be self-funded.
My name's Greg Rogers, and I'm in Oklahoma City. I was born and raised in here all my life. I plan to go to heaven from here. With saying that, I am a resident, because my address is 2320 Sargel Mill Road, Edmond, Oklahoma. And let me say to the councilmen, I realize how much work you all were doing around here to this day. My hat's off to you. But I'm a member of the Tabernacle Baptist Church, but I also pastor a church here also in Oklahoma City, Antioch Institutional Baptist Church, and our church has also been under the same guns. And so, I just plead to the council that this will be addressed and dealt with, because we have a lot of number of frail, fragile senior citizens and members and who cannot come and attend worship, when there are those individuals who are stampeding and making tonic noises to the pulpit and to the congregation. So, we do, we ask, pleading for your support and that this would be dealt with. And again, officers have came. We thought we had a law that was presented here to the state of Oklahoma, but there has nothing been done. We're now going to court June 3 because of an assault that was placed on one of our, actually, my own daughter, an incident that took place on a Sunday morning there. So, again, I like Pastor Harrison. We apologize as churches. It's not our position to carry on, have this type of atmosphere go on in our city or in our communities anywhere. Thank you.
Is there anybody else who'd like to make a comment? Yes, ma'am. Again, three minutes. This is not a debate. If you just make your remarks to the council, please.
Thank you, council. I understand that. Respect your timeframes. My name is Kara Smith, and I'm a member of Tabernacle Baptist Church, and I just want to inform the council that I agree with the comments that have been echoed, that the conflict that is proposed with regard to the Oklahoma City Police Department is without founding. I disagree, because I agree with you, they've done what they are able to do. They are using taxpayer money, and they should be doing what their duties and responsibilities should be, and not in getting involved with regard to the ecclesiastical aspects within a church. A church is, has its own governing instruments and own governing guidelines, and whatever those provisions will be and what that body decides to do should be not infringed upon. And so, I'm here today to say that I believe that the members of Tabernacle who have exercised and not have, Pastor Harrison as the pastor of Tabernacle Baptist Church, have acted within their authority, and that should not be infringed upon by any government entity. So, I am just saying today that I believe that we have acted appropriately and that this is not a matter before the council, nor is it a matter of criminal nature. It is a matter of separation church and state, and the church has acted in which it believes it should be and who should be the leader of their church, which is a private entity incorporated within the state of Oklahoma, and they have not violated those guidelines. And I would respectfully ask that the council not seek to infringe upon those rights and responsibilities. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Yes, ma'am.
Karen Harrison, again, I am a member of Tabernacle Baptist Church also. I didn't say that before.
This is not a debate now.
Sir?
It's not a debate. So, please, don't answer what the debate is about.
Right. I just want to say that we agree that we are not trying to get you into ecclesiastical matters. There are a couple of points that we want to make sure you understand. A judge ruled that Pastor Harrison, the vote that they referred to, that the pastor's still the pastor. We feel like if the judge has ruled that, then the city should enforce that particular rule. Again, we want to emphasize that there is an Oklahoma statute that says that every person, whether you're a member or not, cannot interrupt worship service, and that is what we have asked the city attorney to enforce, not to get involved in personal things, who's the pastor and that type of thing. We're asking them not to get, to enforce the law. That's all we're asking. On Sunday, the Oklahoma City Police actually watched the opposing side that wants, that says that they're not disrupting service. They actually watched them take out the pastor's things in a U-Haul and haul them away, which is just quite burglary. They did nothing to stop that. So, we're asking Oklahoma City Police to enforce the law, not take sides, but when there is a clear law violation, that's what we're asking them to do.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Harrison. Please, please.
Thank you very much.
In the order of keeping some semblance of order here, I'll ask you not to applaud either side. Thank you very much. Is there anybody else who'd like to address the council? If not, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.
I have some questions.
We have already adjourned.